Madam Clerk, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, I welcome you to the regular meeting of the municipal council. Sorry, who's speaking? Madam Clerk, this meeting is now called to order. Roll call.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call for municipal council regular meeting, December 11, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Councilman Abdelaziz. Councilwoman Khan. Councilman Jackson. Councilman Kalik.
Here.
Councilman McCoy.
Here.
Councilwoman Mims. Councilman Rivera. Councilman Velez.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Madam President.
Present.
Madam President and honored to become the members. This evening we have with us to render the prayer would be Reverend Helena Pierce, and she's from the Community Baptist of Englewood Church. And also to lead us in the flag salute would be the Patterson City Sings Choir. Everyone, please rise for the prayer. Thank you.
Father God, we thank you today for this time of gathering. Father, we bring before you the city of Patterson and their council, Father. We ask that you be with us, whatever that we endeavor to do in this city to make Patterson great again. Father, we ask that you bless every council person represented here, every official, city official that's represented. Bless all of our leaders, our police officers, our education council, Father. We ask that you be in the midst of this city. God help the people who live here, those who reside here in Patterson, work hand-in-hand with those who serve with us so that we can make Patterson great again. Father, with you, we can do so much more than we can do on our own. We give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing. We're gonna have the flag salute. Okay, please remain standing. This month, every month, every council member is assigned a month. This month is our Councilman Velez's December month, and he requested that the, for the holidays, that we have a musical selection, and I did agree. I think, you know, in lieu of the festivities, we should. But before we have them, I'd like to take a moment of silence. We've lost a few employees of the city, family members, as I call, the city of Patterson. And Desmond West was laid to rest yesterday. He was from the DPW department. We also have Gloria Schweitzer from the municipal courts department, and I hear that she was with us for many, many, many years. And to all our troops and everyone that has lost a loved one, I have a personal friend, Nena Romang. Her daughter's grandmother suddenly passed away yesterday, actually, this morning. So to everyone that has lost a loved one, to all our troops and to everyone, I ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, you can have a seat, and we will have now the Patterson City Sings Choir. Wow, that was beautiful. I got chills. Thank you. Round of applause, round of applause. Council members, we all got an email, right? 6:30 email? Okay. Quickly, can we all come here to the front, council members, quickly, please? That's, and that's perfect. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you for waiting. Madam Clerk, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes, Madam President. Statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law 2018 to 2019, meeting date December 11, 2018, time 7:00 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2018 to 2019 on or about July 1, 2018. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2018 to 2019 was duly transmitted on or about July 1, 2018, to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, the Arabic Voice, the Italian Voice, the Pasei County Pulse, Jamaica and the News, the Skater International, El Especial, the Patterson Press, and the City Post News, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2018 to 2019 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2018 to 2019 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of the regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Madam President.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council members, we're gonna go to the second reading ordinance, and I'd like to just put on the floor right now, actually, we have a director here. But before he speaks, Councilman Jackson and I and the Public Safety Committee met with the Public Safety Director and Chief, and there is some language in the ordinance that we felt that needs to be removed. So the director is here. I'd like to make an amendment on the floor and put it back to first reading. So, Director?
Look at page, if you look at page four of nine, it's section 5-76, Police Division. If you go to the underlined part, if you're following me, page four of nine, section 5-76, the Police Division, and just go to the underlined part, the mid paragraph, where it says, "Where no chief of police."
In A.
Yeah.
Paragraph A.
Paragraph A. We're going to remove the underlying section from the beginning where it says, "Where no chief of police" or "acting chief of police," all the way down to North Brunswick, 318, New Jersey Super. That entire section is going to come out of this ordinance. The reason being...
Director?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting you. Let's have Madam Clerk first read it into the record.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. Madam Clerk, first item.
Yes, Madam President. First item is our second reading ordinance, item number one, public hearing is required. An ordinance restructure in the Police Department, Fire Department, and Office of Emergency Management into the Department of Public Safety, amended the Patterson Code, Police, ordinance 1806-2.
So move.
We need to move it second, then discussion, and then we need to amend it, then we could come back and amend it.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Discussion.
Okay.
Director.
Okay, so if you look into 5-76, the Police Division, you have a public safety, we're going to have a public safety director. Obviously, this language comes from the PBA versus North Brunswick. It really doesn't apply here to the city of Patterson. What this was, was where a mayor decided he no longer wanted to have a police chief. He wanted a police director solely to run the police department, then have captains and rank and file all the way underneath. It doesn't pertain, because as you know, we have a public safety director, or will have a public safety director, that the police chief and the fire chief and the OEM coordinator will report to. So it's kind of ambiguous, it's not needed, and we'd like to have that section removed, "where no chief of police," because otherwise, the director would be in charge of the, himself, the police chief, in charge of the fire, it doesn't make sense. This was something that comes from language where there was an issue in South Brunswick where they decided to abolish the police chief position.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Corporation Council.
And again, just for the record, in a situation where there was not a police chief, then just, it would, it would go according to regular rank and file, or according to, like, the chain of command?
Yes, we would follow the Corporation Council, we would follow the chain of command. We have three deputy chiefs, you have captains, you could have an officer in charge, you could do anything you needed to run the day-to-day operations of a police department, and you could still have your public safety director, you know, with that person reporting to it. So we have more than enough staff. This really does not pertain to the city of Patterson.
Okay, very well. So Corporation Council, we have to make that amendment on the floor, so there has to be a motion for amendment.
That's correct. And if, if, if that motion to amend this language is passed, then it would substantially change the ordinance, which means that this ordinance would then be today on for first reading.
Okay, very well. The Chairman of Public Safety?
Yeah.
Chairman?
Move to amend.
Okay.
I just had one, one question before amendment.
Councilman Velez?
Thank you, thank you, Council President, and I don't know if the administration could answer this question, but this change, it looks favorable to the department. It will, it will put the, the table organization the right way. But do this, do this involve any raise on the director's salary or whatever?
If you want to give me a raise, let me know, but no. This has nothing to do with salaries, this has nothing to do with individuals, this has nothing to do with people, this has to do with, it's structurally wrong and doesn't fit. This was from an issue in another city that they did not want to have a police chief any longer.
All right, that, that's good notice. Thank you.
Okay, very well. So, Madam Clerk, we had a, we have an amendment on the floor, moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Kalik. Roll call on the amendment for item number one.
Yes. Roll call on the amendment.
And to go back to first reading, am I correct?
That is correct.
Yes. Roll call on the amendment for item number one, for, to be reverted back to first reading. Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
On the amendment. Councilwoman Khan.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims. Councilman Velez.
I, I don't know why, I don't know, but just a question, why you have to go to first reading, we doing an amendment on the floor, it could be passed by the, oh, it had to be public?
By, by law, because this substantially alters the ordinance.
Okay.
By law, the citizens are entitled to now come back and have a public hearing on, on the new ordinance.
So this is the first reading.
This is first reading.
Okay, so comes back to first, and now we will put it in our next meeting to second reading with a public portion.
Correct.
Okay, all right, because it was in the second reading. Okay, all right, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Your.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number one is now reverted back to first reading. May I have a roll call for the first reading so I can take it back?
Yes.
Second reading. Roll call on item number one and first reading, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number one is hereby adopted and first reading. Legal department will make the necessary changes on the amendment, I should have said that earlier, and the second reading will be held at the next regular meeting on January 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
What's the date again, Madam Clerk?
January 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM. That's the next regular meeting in January.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'd like to go to the non-consent agenda.
Yes, Madam President.
And I'd like to take number 24 first, then number 27, second, and items 29 and 30th, 30, I am removing from the non-consent agenda. I'd like to put it on for workshop, our next workshop in January. So 29 and 30th, and 30. 30.
So at this time, Madam President, are you taking the consent agenda items first?
No.
24?
Would you like to do that? Just take the consent real quick and then, okay, let's do the consent, but then I'd like to, the order that I gave you, Madam Clerk?
24 and 27, after, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll do the consent agenda items now.
Yes.
Next item of the agenda is our consent agenda items. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed on the consent agenda are numbers two through 22. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Motion?
So move.
Madam President, on number 15, I had requested the information, but I see it on some of them and not on my particular one that I requested.
Are you talking about the first one on 15?
Yeah.
Did they not provide that info?
Huh? No, they didn't? I don't see it on here. What happened, Madam Clerk?
No, yes. It was sent up this afternoon. It's for a number...
15.
468-470 Broadway. It came up, I printed a copy for you, because I know it was your request.
Okay.
So it's here, it did come up. I have a copy. Would you like to have it?
Okay.
Say that.
The response is here, it came up this afternoon, and I printed it for you.
Would you like to look at it before we vote?
Yes, you did have some requests, it's here. Would you like to have it?
Yes.
Councilwoman, would you like to look at it before we vote?
Yes.
Yeah, it was moved. Actually, they removed it, it wasn't signed. I think she's just gonna look up to make sure that it goes to that, or else.
Madam, 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 Council President, is there any way that we could just take this one off for now?
If you like that, yes, we can.
Again, and then we'll put it back on the workshop?
Okay.
Okay, because I need to look at this.
Okay, so, so...
Number 15, is that correct?
So, Madam Clerk, we're gonna remove item 15.
Yes, sir.
Now, are we removing?
One license.
The one? Which is, because I know this went through committee, finance, okay? So, number 15 has one, two, three, four, so...
The one on...
Is it possible for us just to remove the first one, 468-470? Corporation Council?
Yes.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President.
We're going to remove 468-470 from item number 15. Corporation Council, the suggestion is to remove it and put it in non-consent, and then we make the changes there.
Oh, I apologize, I thought that we already agreed it was going, it was going on the non-consent.
Councilwoman, but in order for us to make the change that you want, because we can't, there's, all, the other businesses are under that one item, so we'll have to just put it on non-consent and remove the one item that you have concerns about, okay? So, I, motion to move...
So, move.
Do we have to, do we motion to remove it?
No, you can just remove it to the non-consent agenda.
Okay, so we're removing it, putting it on the non-consent, very good.
Yeah, but we didn't move it, so everybody started moving without moving the second, that's why.
There's no second.
No, no, at the beginning of the reading, we had to say, move it, and second, then remove the item, and then get the vote.
No, no, we can make the amendment before, there was, there was no second.
Correct, you can make the amendment, like any other non-consent agenda item, you can make the amendment on the floor as you vote on that particular item during the discussion.
When we get to that.
So, okay, so, Madam Clerk, you're gonna read it now, removing item 15 and putting it on the non-consent.
Right, so item number 15 is removed from the consent items. Okay, so may I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda items?
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Khan. Roll call.
Roll call on the consent agenda items two through 22, with the exception of item number 15, which will be handled separately. Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson? Oh, I'm sorry, he's sitting there. Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims? Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Items number two through 22, with the exception of item number 15, hereby adopted on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take item number 24.
Next item is item number 24. Item number 24, resolution authorized in the city of Patterson to enter into a cooperative pricing agreement known as the Pasei County Energy Cooperative Pricing System, ID number 184 PCE CPS, sponsored by Councilman Abdelaziz, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims and Councilman Velez, Administration, Resolution 18648.
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item number 24.
Roll call on item number 24 for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan? Councilman Jackson?
Item number 24?
Yes, sir.
You know, I would just vote no, but I definitely think the public deserves an explanation. And Mr. BA, I know you were not here for the presentation, but I definitely had an opportunity to speak to you about it, and the mayor definitely was. It's a disappointment when you have a figure, national figures, such as Ray Lewis, who's doing creative and innovative things around the country, who brought a proposal to the city... It's a disappointment when you have a figure, national figures such as, uh, Ray Lewis, who's doing creative and innovative things around the country, who brought a proposal to the city to save us potentially two million dollars, and we're entering to an agreement to, uh, save fifty thousand dollars. And, um, there's some really alarming things that, that are centered around this whole thing. My vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm all for, um, saving, cost-saving, but, um, I have, this is just a estimate. I have some doubt in it. We are switching from P C N G, a reli- reliable energy source, to a third party who's gonna buy some credits. And we don't even know how much saving it's gonna be, but P C N G is a, is a reli- re- reliable energy source, so my vote is no.
Your vote is no, Councilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
This is being arranged through the, uh, Pasei County Cooperative, which is, um, uh, being utilized now by a number of municipalities within the county, and will be joining that group should this resolution pass. Um, P C N G will still be the principal person delivering the product, um, to the city. This is to, um, affect city buil- buildings only and does not, uh, have a residential portion. It represents a, a cost savings, and I think in these, um, difficult times, albeit modest, all cost savings would be advantageous. So I support the resolution. Uh, it bring about, um, an opportunity for change for, for the city, and, um, and I think it's a reasonable request that we, um, support this action to save taxpa- taxpayers' dollars. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
Thank you. And so, based on the information that we received and the presentation, especially when our city is in a financial deficit and our taxpayers has, have been taxed over the last ten years, I think when we have an i- uh, opportunity to help save money for our city, um, I think we need to take the opportunity and the chance to make sure that we vote, um, on those opportunities. And I think this is a great opportunity for our city. I think it is cost savings. I think it will help us, um, and I think that even though we have an estimate, I think it will be higher than what has been given to us, um, and it's good to have some competition. Um, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Sorry, beautiful presentation, the last sign in the last meeting. I concur with my colleague, uh, Councilwoman McCoy, and also Councilwoman, uh, Lysamine. Listen, fifty-one cities are taking advantage of this, uh, com- uh, of this, um, this supplier. And, um, and it's good that we be smart enough also to take advantage, uh, what is in front of us. Fifty-one city, and they are big cities too, small city, and they taking advantage of balancing their budget and cost savings. Uh, one of the things I will say is that we, as legislative, don't take the smart, uh, decision for our constituents, uh, probably, we know what we're gonna get, a city with more debt, and then we can handle it, then tax goes up, taxes, taxes go higher. So we here to do the right decision, based on the presentation that the, they give us, um, well certified. The good thing is that the Department of Public Works will have those lights on when they need it and on when they need it. So, uh, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
So be- before I vote, as you all can see, it has passed. I am definitely all for shared services agreements, co-ops, saving the city money, absolutely. But I also answer to a lot of people who, um, and to our constituents in the city, that when information is brought to them through, I don't really go with the whole social media, but through, uh, different media entities, um, it's concerning. Um, I have concerns and I have reservations, of which I won't discuss all here. Um, so, although as I said, I am for making sure that we save money in the city and shared services agreements, I have reservations about this. I don't really see, and I have spoken to accountants who have reviewed this and reviewed other towns, and have said, you know what? There really isn't a cost savings. And so although I've also had conversations with other enti- entities within the county, um, that any savings is good for the city of Patterson. I will continue to say that I have reservations about this, and at this moment, I cannot support this. My vote is no.
Thank you. The vote is five in favor, three against, one absent. Item number twenty-four is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Um, Madam Clerk, before we proceed with the agenda, um, I do wanna put on the record, because I didn't say in the beginning, Councilwoman Flavio has been under the weather. Um, I'm gonna ask him not to go to D R. anymore, because since he's been back, he's been sick. But, um, on a serious, he wanted me to express to all of you that he is not here today because he is ill. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, Madam Clerk, I'd like to take, um, I know that Councilwoman Mims did let us know in workshop that she will be leaving this meeting early, so I'd like to take, um, the item that she is sponsoring.
Twenty-fifth?
Yes, which is item number twenty-seven, yes.
Next item is item number twenty-seven. Resolution honoring Angela Coxon for her thirty-three, thirty-three years of service as an educator in the city of Patterson, sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims, co-sponsored by Council President Maritza Davila, and Councilwoman Ruby Ann Cotton, and Councilman Louis Velez. City Council, resolution eighteen six five one.
Second.
So move by Councilwoman Mims, second by Councilwoman Cotton and Councilwoman Velez. Roll call on item number twenty-seven.
Roll call on item number twenty-seven for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz.
I've sat on, um, a couple committees with Ms. Angela with the union and educators, and she's a strong fighter for our Patterson teachers, and, um, I'm, I'm sor- I'm a little hurt to see that she's retiring, because she was a strong advocate for the union and the kids and our, and our students in the city of Patterson, but this is just some, a little bit that we could do honoring her, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Khan?
I would just like to say, um, um, Madam Clerk, um, it's an honor to be able to, um, sit here to, um, honor Angela Crockett for all the years of service that she's been with the city. I've known her for many, many years, so I just wanna say congratulations to her and enjoy retirement. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
And so I just want to say to, um, Ms. Angela Crockett Coxon, um, I have to check to make sure that the resolution says that Angela Crockett dash Coxon. I have to just make sure, because, um, uh, the agenda doesn't say that, so we just wanna make sure that it, it states that. Want to celebrate your thirty-three years. Thank you for the implementation of the library and doing so many wonderful things at Panther Academy all throughout our school district. We will definitely miss you, but we will be with you to celebrate our next week. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Thank you for your serving. Congratulations. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number twenty-seven is hereby adopted.
Very good, uh.
Madam President, if I may, there's an item to be voted on the agenda. Would you like to have it? Take care of that now?
Is that the, the addendum? Where, where is it? I don't see it.
Number thirty-seven. Joan will hand them out to the council members. If you would like to vote. She, she bringing it around.
Okay.
And with this item, need a unanimous vote.
I believe that's the item for fire?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Joan is hanging them out at this point as we speak. May I continue, Madam President?
Yes, Madam.
Okay. Item number thirty-seven to be voted on. Um, the following resolution is scheduled for your consideration at the next regular meeting of the municipal council to be held Tuesday, December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, at seven P. M. in the council chambers, one five five Market Street, Patterson, New Jersey, third floor. Item to be voted on the agenda. Item num- resolution, item number thirty-seven. Item number thirty-seven, resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved state contract vendors for specialized firefighter equipment and services for the fire department. Fire, resolution eighteen six six one.
Move.
Move.
Move by Councilwoman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Velez and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call to add the item number thirty-seven to the agenda.
Okay. Roll call to vote item number thirty-seven onto our regular meeting agenda. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number thirty-seven is hereby added to our regular meeting agenda.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, let's take item number thirty-one.
Next item is item number thirty-one. Item number thirty-one, resolution honoring Vivian S. Matthews as fourth generation matriarch in the city of Patterson, sponsored by Councilwoman Ruby Ann Cotton, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lelisa Mims and Council President Maritza Davila. City Council, resolution eighteen six five five.
Move it.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Cotton, uh, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call on item number thirty-one.
Yes.
Roll call on item number. Roll call on item number thirty-one for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know, just what it is. Well, okay. I just wanna say, um, congratulations to Mrs. Vivian Matthews as the fourth generation here in the city of Patterson. And my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
I just wanna congratulate my godmother on this awesome, um, award that you received on last week. You wear eighty well. Congratulations. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Congratulations, Ms. Matthews, and God bless your eighty. My, my vote is yes.
Thank you. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-one is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, item number twenty-eight.
Next item is item number twenty-eight. Item number twenty-eight reads, resolution honoring Victory Day of Bangladesh, sponsored by Councilwoman Kalik and co-sponsored by all the other council members.
You wasn't here.
So moved. So moved.
City Council, resolution eighteen six five two.
Move by Councilwoman, um, Kalik.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Abdelaziz. Roll call on item number twenty-eight.
Who's second, Madam President?
Councilwoman Abdelaziz.
Thank you. Roll call on item number twenty-eight for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Look forward to celebrating on Sunday. The Bengali community is, uh, growing in, community in our city that had, is doing great things in the schools in our city, and I am honored to be part, to be voting on something like this, so my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
This Sunday, December sixteenth, we'll be celebrating forty-seventh Victory Day of Bangladesh. I'm inviting everybody to join us for a fulfill cultural event and flag raising. Thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Madam. The time on record, Councilman, is?
Twelve noon, sir.
Twelve noon. Um, I wanna ask, um, make my apologies now, um, that Sunday is very difficult for me, um, and at that time of the day, the, the height of, um, my worship service, so if you don't see me, um, you know that, you know where I am. I know that Sunday is becoming the second Saturday of the week, but I still keep up my, um, regular, traditional Sunday activities. So let me apologize, um, in advance for my possible absence. Nonetheless, I, I certainly celebrate with you and wish you all the best and know that you'll have a great time. Hope that the rain holds up, and it'd be great. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
Um, congratulations to our Bengali community. I wanna celebrate all of the successes due in the educational system. Um, the Bengali population is always our valedictorians and salutatorians, and I think that needs to be highlighted and acknowledged. Um, I as well, I am dual purpose. I am a pastor in the city, um, and so I probably will get here late, um, if I'm not able to attend, because I am the preacher of my church, so. Um, but I wanna celebrate, congratulations, um, to the Bengali community, um, and my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Well, if we miss something, uh, Sunday is gonna be a great day. The temperature's gonna be forty-three degrees, is the precipitation is, uh, fifteen from the whole state of New Jersey, so we could celebrate, uh, this, uh, great day, just in case, I'm looking at the calendar, just in case, uh, it's not gonna snow, just gonna be raining. Forty-four degrees, and no humidity's gonna be good, and, uh, we all gonna be here. My vote is yes.
Good to have a personal weatherman on the council.
Councilman Louis Weatherman Velez.
Councilwoman Jackson, we were voting on item number twenty-eight. You voted yes. Thank you. Madam President?
I have been celebrating with Bengali community for many, many years, even before I was an elected official, and I definitely agree, uh, with, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Mims, um, working for, uh, higher education for twenty-five years for Pasei County College. We have seen that the top students that graduate from our classes are valedictorians, are salutatorians, are of Bengali descent, and, you know, it makes me proud. Um, I look forward to being with you, my brother Kalik, and, um, Madam Clerk, my, my vote is yes.
Thank you. The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number twenty-eight is hereby adopted.
Very good. Um, item number twenty-six, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number twenty-six, and item number twenty-six reads, resolution authorizing award of contract to Gulf Connection, Inc. for the purchase of tablets and accessories on the new Jersey State contract from the city of Patterson. Administration, resolution eighteen six five zero.
Move.
Move by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman, uh, Mims. Roll call.
Discussion.
On item number twenty-six, discussion. And before we start, I wanna say something. I have been waiting for this item. I'm going into my fifth year being a councilwoman. I don't have a working computer in my office. Most of the work that I do, I do through my phone. That's not a good thing. That's not the way to do business. Um, this has been a recommendation for a while. I am happy that we were able to, um, decide that who didn't, whoever didn't have a computer, you know, we're not gonna go ahead and invest on getting a computer and a tablet, that we found the monies, it's there, and so I am looking forward, because I know that this, it took so long, because they were vetting, and I know that Harry, our purchaser, um, was on this, so, uh, Mr. B A., thank you, because finally it's happening. Councilwoman Velez?
Uh, uh, yes, I just wanna, uh, bring a part of that, but I know that Councilman, uh, my colleague, uh, Councilman Jackson was lobbying, uh, for this for longest, uh, but I don't see how many of them they are going to be purchasing, so, uh, for twenty. Oh, where, where is that?
Third paragraph?
Twenty-seven thousand six hundred. No, no. Twenty-seven dol- twenty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-two, and fourteen only type, uh, tablets?
Fourteen?
Yeah. Okay, fourteen.
Do you wanna know?
No, no, I just, I just, I just, I know that, uh, we gonna purchase fourteen, but that's the lowest that we could purchase, uh, twenty-seven thousand? the lowest that we could purchase, twenty-seven thousand?
Mr. BA?
Yeah, it's a state contract. We went through our state vendor. You're talking about fourteen tablets?
One model.
For each of, I don't know the exact model, I think it's in the resolution. Ryan, our IT director is here. Ryan can come to the microphone and kind of give you all the details.
It's twenty-seven thousand dollars for fourteen tablets.
That is correct. Plus the software that goes along with it. So if you...
Councilman, you want to take a moment of review?
Yeah, I mean, the resolution, if you read it, it's all in there.
It's in paragraph four, the style, the type.
Councilman Jackson?
Just like to point out that the gross amount would come to a little under two thousand dollars.
Okay.
And when you consider, if you go over to Michael Center over there, and you look at a device that's going to be capable of doing some things and lasting a little while, we know that you buy these electronic devices, the next day they're obsolete, it's easily going to cost you in the range of two thousand dollars plus. So I think the price is reasonable, and we spend easily, I think, three hundred thousand dollars in the clerk's office alone, and the council office, clerk and council office alone on paper every year, so it should be a substantial savings.
Madam President, I just have one question. Brian, what's the bandwidth? Because we get a lot of documents, so will it be able to hold and expand to the capacity of the information that we will be receiving?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we spec the high resources devices. The total cost is not only for the tablet, but also for the, it comes with a keyboard, it's a type cover, and also a stylus. And the units will be integrated into the city's system. While you're here in the meetings, you'll be able to access your documents, the Florida system, the agendas, things of that nature. That's the solution that we spec down for you.
And will there be a Wi-Fi router when we outside?
Yeah, there is a Wi-Fi in chambers at the moment. Those tablets will be connected to it.
Okay, thank you.
Very well. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. Roll call an item number twenty-six for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz?
I should have asked a question before I went to roll call. So this is for the council members? Mr. BA?
There's nine of us.
I understand we need this. I just don't, I think we could have went on a different laptop, Brian. I think this is quite expensive, but with the fiscal situation we have, there's other cheaper laptops. I'm Googling some of this stuff. We don't need top of the top. I just need something I can get an email on, check the stuff that I'm going to get. This is a very good device, so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cotton? Councilman Jackson?
Understanding Councilman Abdulaziz's position and completely agreeing with him, I think that we must consider that we're handling the city's business and...
It is a state contract.
It's a state vendor.
Whatever you're looking at is not state contract. Best Buy, that's not a state contract.
We don't, we don't get to shop at Best Buy. We spend quite a substantial amount on paper every year that we're, you know. But we'll have an opportunity to move the city forward, have access to more than just emails, but be able to access the complete database. Instead of requesting things from the BA, such as past documentation, ordinances, resolutions that's been voted on in the past, we'll have access to those things right here at our desk. We should be able to access it very quickly, so I'm hoping that this Wi-Fi connection that we do have will be fast enough. And while we have Ryan here, and I should have spoken about it while we're in discussion, I'm hoping, Mr. BA, we can also find the past approved devices for the video system so that the viewers can view it in high def, as opposed to it still being squeezed down, as well as, I know that Mr. Foot has been against us putting a server where it's accessible so we can stream live on the web as well. I think that the general public deserves to be able to view our city business at wherever they are, and that means those who are not, who don't have access to public access TV. I think that, you know, as well as being able to do some of the things that we're in this modern century, we should be able to also stream and viewers should be able to watch meetings as well. So, but on this item, I think it's well overdue. I appreciate all the work you did, Ryan. Thank you very much. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Khalid?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
So I'm at a crossroad. Because when I see our DPW workers not having the proper equipment, their vehicles are not up to date, when I see so many other needs that are in the community, I'm at a crossroad because I really don't have a lot of the concerns of not getting information, but it is, it's accessible and it's easy. So it's kind of a crossroad, but the concern I have is, the question was asked, how many were there? And the, and the, I, the resolution says fourteen. There's only nine council members, so my question is, who are the other five for?
You need the clerk's office. So for all of you to have them, and not the clerk's office, that these council meetings would be counterproductive, so the clerk's staff would need the laptops as well.
So it's all inclusive?
Yes.
It's our clerk's office.
So my, my next concern is, even though it's a state contract, when, when this is presented, because it's very costly, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars for fourteen laptops, right? So even if it's a state contract, do we ever go out to bid to get other comparisons, or do we just go with that contract? What is the process here?
Ryan and his team did an extensive job, and that's why it took so long. This is the best we think we can get for what we're getting. We think this is the best value for the actual tablet, the stylus, and the computer, and the service, and the maintenance. We believe that that's the best price. So could you go to Best Buy and get something different? You probably could, but I don't know if it's the same value that we're getting right here. And I think it cannot be understated, the amount of time, employee time, that it takes also to prepare for all these council meetings. And we sit here for two or three hours, and when I leave here, all of this stuff is left up here. And so we don't even take this paper home many times. It's standing right here. And so we're photocopying, and staff is working overtime to produce these documents where if we just had a simple mechanism and process where this stuff can be emailed, we don't have to do that too. So you're talking about staff time, employee cost and efficiencies, not just cost savings on paper.
Will there be a learning curve? Will there be training required to adapt to this new process? Or is it something that?
Of course. I think, I think once we get them, right, and Ryan and his team and the clerk's office will have to get used to, and you're going to have to get used to getting these documents via email, right? And being able to open them and look at them and close them. So sure, it's going to be a learning curve, but I think this is the 21st century, and if we're going to move this city into the 21st century, we have to use some technology, and I think this is a good purchase for the value that we're getting from these computers.
Well, I hear all the responses, but when I go to the Broadway Library, and the elevator has been down for months, and I know it's something that will come up in the future on the agenda soon, I just can't vote for laptops for twenty-seven thousand dollars. So my vote is no.
Thank you. Councilman Vellis?
You know, I go to my email from my phone. I open the email and I could open the attachment, and it downloads without no problem, and I could read it back and forth. I could close it, open it, and look at it without no problem. I utilize my office a lot, and I got a good computer there that's been working since I've been a councilor. You know, we talk about cost savings, and we talk about, let's save money for the city, let's do this. I understand, Mr. BA, that we, we move into the next century or another world, whatever, but right now, I don't think that we should spend twenty-four thousand dollars in twenty-seven, okay, in, in this type of equipment. I believe that this, that's my opinion, and please, I'm entitled on my opinion. I believe I will be more happy to see a six-cap vehicle, simple one, for DPW, and other, or other equipments that they really need. And I, you know, I can't support this. I have a good phone, and you didn't need it to put any special program to put the emails, the documents, or whatever you need to send me, and I don't have no problem answering. As you know, that I answer all of them. So I, I think that this money could be used wisely, and my vote is no.
Thank you. Madam President?
Council President, before you vote...
I wasn't going to vote yet. I was going to start talking.
Before you start talking?
Okay.
Let me say that, recognize that the Finance Chair is not here this evening, and let me recognize that I think it would be unfortunate for us to go forward with a mixed understanding of the benefit of the instruments that we are about to put into place. And it appears that there isn't a full understanding of what the game plan is. We have discussed this some times ago, and it's coming back to us now, and it appears that we don't, we're not in, there's not a consensus on moving forward. If we're going to integrate the technology, it makes no sense that we do a bifurcated system where some folks are on paper and the others are electronic. That was just going to create more confusion and difficulty for the clerk's office. I'd like to remove my vote from a yes vote to a no vote, not because I don't believe in the strategy or the approach, but I think it will give us an opportunity to take this matter back to workshop and, and go over what is the approach and the strategy, and bring that back at a time when there's a greater consensus. I think it, this is creating the impression that the council has not been deliberate, and it's been cavalier in the expenditure. I don't believe that's the case. I think if you look at the, the human costs of reproducing paper documents for the workshop, for mailing out to the council members on, on Fridays, for the regular council meeting, reshuffle them every time there's a change in the package, renumber in the paper, and just keeping track of the paper documents, it, it is a tremendous cost in of itself, and I think it would be, it would be well understood that we are in fact saving the taxpayers' money, should we be able to demonstrate that in a more tangible way. I think that was the initial assessment when this recommendation was made, and I think somehow that may have been lost. Councilman, I really must ask, can I ask, Council President? But if you, if you have a clear understanding, and from your understanding, you realize that this is a cost savings? Yes. And you realize that this is not a frivolous expenditure? Correct. I, I'm just curious of your position. I mean, we vote on many items that there isn't full consensus of, and this doesn't mean that some will be able to opt into paper and some, if the council votes as a majority and says that this is our new direction, and I do understand your point that some of the commentary may, may be a little bit misleading, but I think that we, we can take that opportunity to educate people as we move forward because we run the risk of doing what we've done in the past by, with some of the audio/video equipment, where some of these quotes are going to expire, and then we'll have to go back after quote, and then we'll be doing this, this, this cycle, this vicious, ugly cycle again, which will actually just be more costly to the public. And it's just a little alarming, concerning to me that we'll vote on a four-million-dollar wall at the stadium, but we're hesitant to vote on twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is substantially less.
To make our work easier. And so, you know, what I, I take as, as an insult is to have someone say, I could do my work out of my phone. This is not about that. I mean, we should all be on the same page. So I agree with you, Councilman McCoy, that it is obvious that we have various council members, that Councilman Abdulaziz, who voted, know that he doesn't understand. Councilwoman Mims, and they, and then they're, they are in their right. The reality is, we all have to be on the same page, but we've been talking about this. Three hundred thousand dollars? Paper? And what do you guys do with it? You leave it all here, and we toss it. We toss it in the garbage. We talk about other municipalities and where they are, and when you go to their meetings, and they're all sitting with their tablets and these tons of paper. But we, we talk about...
No, Councilman. I, I, I'm really upset, it upsets me that I made a statement that I have not had a working computer in my office. I'm the council president. So whatever work I get, I do, I do from my phone, or I ask Madam Clerk or my secretary. I like doing my own work. I like writing my own memos. I like answering my own emails. This is wrong. It truly is that we don't have an understanding. So with that said, I'm going to accept. I, I actually don't even think we should just vote it down. I think we should just take it off, then voting it down.
Madam President?
Unless we take it off.
One moment, I'm not done. All right. Our Chair of Finance isn't here, okay? And I know that he, he was big on this and talking about where we're going, okay? We discussed this in finance, and I, I know that you've done a lot of work on this, all right? So it is obvious by the votes that it's going to fail, okay? But it just saddens me that we now have to go back again. So how much longer? Before we can all be on the same page? And I agree with you, Councilman Jackson, we spend a lot of money on other things, and we sell our properties as well, and you know what? When you talk about DPW and other departments, you're right, Councilwoman, but we also ask our departments, okay, to give us what they need.
Councilman...
Madam President.
Wait, 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 Councilman Abdulaziz.
No, I, no, no, I was beforehand.
Okay, Councilwoman Cotton? And we were on roll call, by the way.
Yeah, I know, but I just need to say that I've been sitting here for five years, and I can't, I can't read nothing on my phone. I can't pull down documents, I can't do what I need to do. And everyone knows I need to look up resolutions, I need to find things, and everyone knows, they come into my office, I have my papers. I don't throw none of my agendas away, and you can make little notes even on your pad of what, of what you need to do. My phone is not the up-to-date phone. We've been waiting to me for a while. There's a lot of things that we, as council members, need to help us, to me, serve the city better by having the equipment that we can use. And we do use a lot of paper, but some council members here may be able to pull documents, but not me. I can't pull nothing.
We should all be, Councilwoman, we should all be on the same page. You have other entities that have, in the district, they have tablets. Okay, we talk about, we need to be on online payment. Councilman Abdulaziz, you've been on that, okay? We talk about, we need to be in another century. Where are we? And so we continue to go, and we backtrack. So for some things, we're okay in being up to par, and, and others, we're not.
Madam President?
Councilman Abdulaziz?
It's your turn, Councilman.
So I think you, you misunderstood why I started, or I started dialogue and voted no. When I'm looking at a tablet, and we got the director here, that's costing close to two thousand dollars, we're asking department heads, we're asking union members, collective bargaining agreement members to, to, to cut back what they're spending. I don't want a Cadillac laptop. We could get Google Chromebooks for four, five hundred dollars. I agree that, that, I agree that we should go, go green and not spend money, but I don't need a laptop that costs two thousand dollars. We get, our high school students get these Chromebooks. They get on the internet, you could download, you could tell if you get a keyboard, and the director will let you know that, the director will let you know.
It's more than just a tablet. It's more than just a tablet.
Council President, Council President, we all know what a computer is, we all know what a laptop is. What I'm asking is, I support to go, to go green, but you don't need to bring in a piece of product that's the best of the best. We should cut back. We should cut back. If you, it's, it's, there's a lot of more, our, our corporation council right here has a laptop in front of her. I think those are cheaper than the ones we're, we're on.
I doubt it. Point of order, Madam Clerk.
So, in the end, but...
Madam President, point of order, I think, I think, you know...
Council President, I just want to reiterate, because...
Councilman, I think we're spinning our wheels. I think it's clear that we should have done more discussion, and I think it would be a much more advantage if the matter goes back to workshop, we finish our discussion there?
Very well.
And take direction.
Agreed.
I think if we.
Council President.
Nope. You just came back into the room now. Okay. Okay, I'd like for every council member to, hold on. To remove your votes, we'll bring it back to workshop. We'll have more discussion about it.
No, you could have the vote and bring it back.
I don't want it to fail. This is needed, all right? So we remove your votes and we'll bring it back to workshop and have a further discussion about it.
Well, I don't, Council President, with all your respect, I don't think we should tell me to remove a vote and that I did with common sense on it because other things have failed and they presented again. Other things have failed in this council and they come and present it again or come with another, I don't know, explanation.
Just a preference.
Oh, preference?
Just a preference.
Oh, okay. Who's gonna remove it? Oh, you mean, to me?
No, it's everybody, it's not just.
Okay.
Everyone who voted.
Okay, so let me remove my vote, but I guess still standing the same thing. I just heard what I have to do. I remove my vote.
So you're withdrawing your vote, Councilman Velez, Councilwoman Mims. May I start from the beginning? Councilman Abdelaziz? To withdraw your vote, your vote regardless of.
To remove it, remove it and take it back to workshop.
Oh, to take it back to workshop? Yes.
Remove your vote.
To remove, make it very clear, remove my vote to take it back to workshop.
Yes, Councilman Cotton.
It's a matter of preference.
Preference. Looking, listening to the Dean of the Council and the heads of explanation, they could bring it back to the workshop.
So Councilman Cotton, you're removing your vote, withdraw your vote?
May I make a point of order just for this process? According to Robert's rules, technically, the council president, on her own volition unless overturned by a majority of council members, on her own can return this matter back to workshop and remove it from the floor. So there really isn't a need for people to remove their vote. And it appears that it was going to fail. So I don't think that there's a majority vote to overrule the council president's decision to remove it from the floor and send it to workshop. So we don't have to do the steps of people removing their votes if it appears the consensus that it's to be removed to, from the agenda tonight and remove back to the workshop.
Well, I appreciate that Corporation Council, but I did wanna give all the council members.
An opportunity to speak.
So I'd like, and yes, it is a matter of preference. I'd like it removed. I want it to go back to workshop. Let's have a further discussion. I still feel that we definitely need this. And it is not just the tablet, but the programs that will come with it and what we're gonna be able to do. But moving forward and understanding, you know, we're a body of nine. I'd like to put it back to workshop. So I wanted every council member to actually agree that we would do that. That's why I asked for the vote.
Okay, I just didn't want a situation where people who didn't agree believed that they had the authority to disagree and that would stop it from going back to workshop.
Thank you.
For the motion and the second.
Madam Clerk, this item is being removed and being taken back to workshop.
Of January 8, 2018.
And I didn't vote, so we were, I'm able to.
You were able to remove it because there was no.
Very well, thank you.
I didn't do a vote call. Okay, thank you.
All right, so.
Madam President, if I may, just a reminder for the payment of bills.
Yes, 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 we're going to do the payment of bills next. So this, this was removed. All right, can I have a motion, payment of bills?
Certainly, Madam President. Payment of bills for, the Finance Committee did meet and review the payment of bills. The amount is $7,448,038, of which $3,496,876.8 will be forwarded to the Patterson Public Schools. I think those are the amounts of material difference. Motion is being presented for your approval.
Discussion.
Do I have a second? Okay, move by Councilman McCoy, second by Councilman Jackson, discussion?
Yes, Madam President. The reason I ask him, because I see a purchase order here. But it's not telling me who traveled.
It's funny you say that, I asked that in Finance.
Health service records fee, medical, no, not that one. The one, travel to Washington DC. I don't know if 45 accident to go there, but.
Councilman, there's an answer for this, so you don't have to, I, that is my question in Finance. So I think that Marge can answer that question for you. Okay?
Hold on for a minute before I answer, you answer. Nowly the travel to Washington DC, the expenses on the hotel that goes up to $2,562.
Councilman.
But let me ask a question.
No, no, the reason why I wanna say that because you're looking at right now bills that pertain to conferences. So there are professional development conferences that individuals go to that are paid for by grants. Grants that are written with specifications that certain directors have to go and do certain amount of hours and so forth. So your question is valid? And you don't have to go into every number because we all have the bills in front of us. So have our CFO answer your question. I think your next question is gonna be, who are they, right? I think we don't need to mention any personal names here.
Why not? Why not?
Council President, thank you for giving the details of what this is, and that's true. The conference is paid for by the grant. These are annual conferences that the director goes to each year who runs the Ryan White program. It's funded by the grant for continuing conference education. As far as the individual's name, it's the director. I don't know the name of the employee.
How many days they was there?
I, whatever the number, it might be two days, I'm not sure. I don't have those details on the voucher.
You don't have the details?
On the voucher. On this voucher. It's the attachment that is not present here.
Who approved this, even that is paid by a grant? Who approve it, the individual to take a flight?
It's part of the budget for the Ryan White program. And it's approved for by the Director of Human Services, as the Director of the Department.
Councilman, can I share something with you?
What was it?
Councilman, I am a member of various associations. And within my 25 years of working in an institution, I need to get certain hours of professional development. And that's part of the contract. And sometimes, I mean, I've never had the opportunity to go to the ones in Puerto Rico, but they've been in different states, all right? So that is part of it. So the approval basically, you know, does come, because at the end of the day, who signs the bills? Right? So the BA is aware of this. You are making sure that the monies is in the grant, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, so, and this is part of, when we write those grants, there are specifications. I'd like to proceed, Councilman, if you're done.
I know, I know, but this is, this is the thing. If, 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 if the quantity is one person that is going there and I see the description in the account that says, all of them says, travel and conference, travel and conference, and they all have different amount. You know, it has to raise a question. All of them has, and it's not telling me how many days and in the hotel only. You have two hotels, bills, with different amounts. And if you look at, you know, I just, you know, it raises questions on it.
And you're right to do so. I'd like to proceed with the payment of bills. If you don't wanna pay, if you don't want to vote on it because you feel that you need more information, definitely, I'm sure that the BA and our CFO is, will be able to provide that information.
And Councilman Velez, I think you make some valid points, but you know, the payment of bills is already a very thick document. So if you're requiring us to now produce all of those documents and the backup information in the payment of bills, you know, I think the Finance Committee reviewed it. Maybe, I don't know if we can get that document out earlier. I know it's very difficult to do that sometimes, Marge, because you're actually paying bills to the day that we submit the payment of bills, so.
You're talking $7 million versus, and again, those questions you ask, I asked them in Finance.
Right.
So they're valid questions, all right? They're valid questions. So I'd like to proceed with the payment of bills. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on payment of bills.
Yes, ma'am. Roll call and payment of bills, the amount of $7,448,038. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanna say to the BA and to Marge, my Finance Chair, I see how you put it in order, like the grant together, the other department together, which makes it very easy when I look through here. So I just wanna thank you for putting them in order. If you look at it, you'll see that they're in order. And I thank you for that. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Khalid?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Mims?
Since we're in the thanking mode, I wanna thank you for making sure that we have done away with the manual process and we're doing it more computerized. So I wanna thank you for taking that request and adhering to it. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
The reason I'm voting yes on this is because other, you know, bills are here that are more important to pay. My vote is yes because that, not because the travel, you know. If I gotta say one day or two days in a hotel for $2,000, I better have a jacuzzi inside. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam President?
Come on, Councilman, don't do that. Don't do that, please don't do that. See, I'm gonna have to correct you again. Councilman, it isn't just jacuzzis and hotels, you know. It's traveling expenses.
Listen, I go to Washington DC in a train for $150.
On conferences, Councilman? Not only do they have to pay for a flight, they also have the room. There's a room and board piece to this. So it isn't just, you know, thinking that you're sipping on wine in a jacuzzi.
No, look at this. When we had to go to Atlanta City. No, when we had to go to Atlanta City and pay our hotel to get instruction over there how to run the government and they use a grant for go and do a training and this and that, I think it's not fair.
So you see, Councilman, you see, look at that, I'm agreeing with you. See, that is understandable. But please understand, it's two different things, okay? Because we've been ordered by DCA, that's been taken away from us. This is an item that, a grant was approved based on certain specifications, okay? And that's part of it. So can we kinda think that it's the same thing? It really isn't, okay? So again, you know, you've heard the discussions on our payment of bills. These are the things that we do in committee, okay? I knew this was gonna be a question, you know, for some individuals that go line by line looking at every item, which is what we're supposed to do. But again, please don't, don't take this out of context to think that, you know, these monies are, you know, we're not asking the questions and that, you know, we're letting individuals just go and just have a good time in a hotel somewhere. So I don't, I don't want that to be taken. I don't take that lightly as, you know, I'm one of those persons who does go on different conferences and it's specifically for professional development. All right, so yes, my vote is yes on payment of bills.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Payment of bills is hereby adopted.
Okay, so I, I need to do one more item and we're going to go to public portion, okay? And that item is going to be before our public portion. That item is going, 32, right, Councilman? Item number 32. Please read into the record, item number 32.
Yes, Madam President. Next item is item number 32. Item number 32, resolution endorsing housing need for 81-unit Riverside Terrace Development Project by Riverside Senior Associates, 2017 LLC Economic Development Resolution 18656.
So, second.
Item number 32 was moved by Councilwoman Mims and second by Council, was it, who said? Councilman Abdelaziz. Roll call on item number 32.
Roll call on item number 32 for approval, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton? Yes. Councilman Jackson?
Councilman, I would never question any councilperson's vote. I think we all have to have a clear understanding. But I definitely want to make a point on this one. We sell 17 acres of land for a little more than a million dollars. That's a potentially a 50-plus million dollar hit we take on this property. And we have a difficult time approving $27,000 in tablets, so. What we just voted on. But I mean, the reason, Council President, I'm making a fuss about this one and I hope that you find a means to have a concession for the young lady. She's here with her son, who's an excellent student at Science and Technology. He has to go to school tomorrow, so he's there waiting for public portion. They're residents, current residents in Riverside Terrace. And the circumstances that they're being put through are absolutely embarrassing. And I cannot see myself voting in favor of this. I mean, this is, this is the reason that Patterson loses, in my opinion. We have a person who comes into this chamber and clearly arrogantly says his developer's fee is none of our concern. He walks out of here with $12 million developers fee. These are the types of numbers that I'm concerned about, Councilman Abdelaziz. I know we can go to Best Buy and buy a computer for $400. I'm sure we could get one for $250. But these are the things I like to hammer down hard and make sure that we're being, you know, very particular and frugal about. And at this time, Madam Clerk, as in the past, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Khalid? Councilman McCoy?
Let me say, I'm the third ward councilman. And this development has been in disarray for a very long time. Empty buildings, not suited for the time they were in. And during my time on the council, I have seen CCP address. I have seen the other housing development in my ward, Alabama, address. And much to an improved environment and improved quality of life for the residents that live in those communities. And I anticipate that the same will be, will be true for Riverside. I'm not gonna question anyone's perspective, but the developer was present and shared with us the amount of investment that it will take to undertake this project. And I think the Patterson Housing Authority, their board, has reviewed this matter and has brought it forward with their support. And I think we have to be supportive of that effort. The, the property is not being sold. It's a land lease. And the property at some point comes back to the Housing Authority. There's a commercial strip that's being developed as part of that as well. I think will be consistent with what we have seen on the Route 20 corridor. And I support the effort. I think it brings an improvement to the area. And I support the effort. I think it brings an improvement to the area, opens up the property from what we are now. And in life, there are certain realities that you just have to face. Where we are, what our financial situation is, and what we can do with the things that are before us. This has to be redeveloped into another housing development or scheme to address housing residents. And I think this accomplishes that. It accomplishes a community role. We've added a senior citizen high-rise complex that is greatly needed. I think it meets the objective of the community, and this is what this resolution is saying. Do we support that effort, changing the designation from eighty to eighty-one? We have already approved it and voted on it in the past. This is just a reaffirming of that with the designation of eighty-one units, which will include an apartment for the superintendent to be present at the location, at the development, to provide round-the-clock maintenance and services that would be desperately needed. So my vote is yes, and I hope that my colleagues would support the venture as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Mims?
Thank you. I have lived in Patterson all my life, but I've been a resident in the third ward for eighteen years. And actually live maybe three houses away from the Riverside Terrace Development. Speaking to many of the residents, talking to the neighbors in that community, they all agree that their quality of life will definitely increase with the redevelopment of this facility. There's been many concerns over the years, even up to this point, there's about twenty-nine residents that are still there. And we know that there's a deadline for the end of the year. But the one thing that really pleases me in this project is that the developer came back to us to make sure that they added another unit to ensure there was a super on the premise to make sure that if there are any concerns with the residents, that they would adhere to them. And so I commend that. I also commend the work that this developer has already done in our community with CCP that has been turned into suburban housing, which is, was developed greatly. The quality of the material is great. Also, the Belmont Senior Towers up on the hill, the quality of that material is great, and the landscape is impeccable. And so I believe this will give a better quality of life. I also want to put on record, and I have said it in workshop, the concern of the abatement process regarding rodents and the demolition process, to make sure that we have that on record. It was stated that it would be in phases, but I want to make sure that there are letters that are sent out to the homeowners and the residents of that community and in that neighborhood on what steps will be taken from demolition to completion, and even to the uprise of the first eighty-one units for our seniors, well, eighty seniors and one super, and then one hundred and sixty-four people that will come in after in the family units. So with that said, I think this provides a better quality of life. I think the redevelopment will add quality to the neighborhood. And I believe that the residents that are, have moved out and that will come back to the, to this property, I think they will be pleased with what will be redeveloped there. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
When I see resolution that is adding to benefit more residents in the city of Patterson, of course, we, I say, I have to support. I wish we could find more land to add more units in that same site. And just to the information, adding to the information Councilwoman Liz Minnis, that we had a long conversation in the planning board and also here in the council about this project. The residents that have been placed in other places using vouchers that have been moved from that place have the preference to come back as a first choice to live in this new and project that's gonna be, and this, everybody agreed. This project in that corridor is a eyesore for the whole entire city and whoever visit our city through there. So I will support it, and I will continue supporting things that will benefit the position, the residents of Patterson. So I hope on my life to see this project up and cut the ribbon. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, two against, one absent. Item number thirty-two is hereby adopted.
Okay, councilmembers, we have one, two, three, four items left, and the addendum that I'd like to take. So I'm gonna take item number thirty-seven. I'd like to open up the public portion and then come back to the last four items. But I am going to, I know that the VP did ask for council courtesy when we opened up the public portion to have the young lady that is here. If we can, Madam Clerk, have her speak first. Alright, I'm going to ask, and I will comply with our Vice President on that.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just make one comment before I leave?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. And so just to the viewing public, because I take this assignment very serious as your elected official, I want to thank my son, who turned sixteen today, for allowing me to be here on his birthday. And so because I made a commitment to him for nine fifteen, I am asking to publicly excuse myself so I can be a great mother, as I've always been, to go and cut some red velvet cake with my sixteen-year-old son. But I just want to say happy holidays to everyone. God bless you. May your holidays be wonderful. And give me a shout-out, my birthday is December twenty-seventh. God bless you. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman, you got two December birthdays on the council.
Happy birthday, Madam President.
I do like red velvet cake as well.
I got you.
Okay.
Can I leave with her on the godson of the cake?
Alright, so...
Thirty-seven, I think.
I didn't realize that we also have item number thirty-six with the HVAC system. He is here, so... Chief, I'm gonna do item thirty-six first and then thirty-seven, please. Thirty-six and then thirty-seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Next item is item number thirty-six, resolution authorizing the award of contract.
I'm gonna do item thirty-six and then, and I said it vice versa.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven?
Madam Clerk, item number thirty-six?
Yes. Next item is item number thirty-six, resolution authorizing the award of contract to Johnson Controls, Inc. for the municipal complex HVAC upgrade. Contract number zero-three-zero-eight-one-seven JHN under Thorwell, formerly National Joint Power Alliance, Department of Public Works.
So move.
Hold on one second, Councilman.
To have a second?
One second, please.
Item number thirty-six, you'll have a second.
I have another. Department of Public Works, resolution eighteen-six-six-zero.
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman McCoy. Does anyone have any questions? We have the Director here, we have the gentleman. I know there was some questions before.
Question, yeah.
Madam President, before I just ask the Director to give us a thumbnail overview of the project that's been done at 111 Broadway Municipal Complex to address some outstanding health and occupational issues and concerns. And he has with us Chief Electrical Superintendent of Facilities with him. Thank you, Madam President.
Director?
I got Louis Guzman here. He's gonna give us an overview of what's gonna happen at the complex with the new HVAC system. This is due to violations, P.O.S. violation that we occurred. And Louie will break down what's gonna happen.
Good evening. Not only we're gonna abate the violations that we have from P.O.S., but we're also going to improve the air conditioning, which we don't have any at this moment, and our heating system. At this moment, we are running about thirty-five percent of the heating system in the building. We had about four broken pipes in the last couple of weeks due to the fact that we don't have properly heating throughout the building. This will also improve the quality of air that we have there. We're supposed to pull twenty percent of outside air. At this moment, we don't have any. Because the three air handlers that are gonna be replaced are down. So that's more or less, we're gonna be replacing one boiler, which is about four million BTUs. Three air handling units. We will be getting rid of the water tower. We're gonna pull a air-cooled chiller, and we're gonna have a DDC control. We will have, we will get away from the pneumatic system that is very outdated. This equipment has been there for about forty-something years, and it's time to replace.
Madam, so President? Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you. This question is for Ms. Sharon, our Finance. Is this, is this the money coming from the grant that was done a year ago?
The bond.
This money is coming from?
Yes.
Not the bond, I mean the bond, not the grant, I'm sorry. This money that, to fix this unit at the complex, is from the money that we bonded a year and a half ago?
Not quite a year and a half ago.
Right, but this is, this is where that money is?
Yes.
Okay, I needed to know. I thought we were like asking again for fixing the air conditioning. And I know we talked about the complex for many times, about the system not working, and you go there and it's horrible. So it's that bond money that we bonded a year ago or so. Okay, thank you, Madam President. Yes.
No, Madam President.
What?
Could I speak?
So now you know where we're getting the money from. It's bond money.
Okay, Councilwoman, are you done?
She's finished.
Thank you. You know, he asked me where was we getting the money from, and I said, this had to be the money that we bonded. I remember we talked about it a year ago.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Khan. And Councilman Abdelaziz?
Marge, was this project, I know it's come from the bond money, was this project, the, what was for, that bond money was for this project two years ago?
A year ago.
So it was for this project?
Yes, and this project is in response to the court order to fix the building.
So...
The HVAC system.
So we bonded for a year ago?
Well, we authorized the bond a year ago, and so we're now awarding the contract.
Why did it take us a year? See, we do things backwards here, right?
Madam President, point of order, Councilman. It's now quarter after, almost nine o'clock. We have a committee structure, we have an operational process. This thing has been reviewed and vetted. We bonded the money, the work has been scoped out, and here we are presenting the issues. If we're gonna discuss everything as if it's the first time we've seen it, or we didn't go through the committee structure, we'll be here all night.
Councilman, with all due respect, this came in as an emergency thing on the committee. Unfortunately, I wasn't there, and this is a big, this was a big spending, expenditure, so I'm gonna have some questions. We're at the point here, we're always, we're coming with a big ticket item, and I'm gonna have questions. If this was bonded a year ago, and then we get a court order.
Authorized, Councilman, authorized.
It's all reactive. So if this was a year ago, so that it's...
The court issue has been ongoing. The issues of the building have been ongoing. We didn't have the money to finance it. We bonded for the money. We had to go out with a RFP for the equipment and the service. We're in the process of awarding that contract, and that's the time that it takes.
And this is the last item on the P.O.S. violation that we're taking care of as of today. The floor and the cabinets and front desk has been taken care of, and the ceiling and all the electrical work has been done.
Any other buildings in our city, and if the superintendent facilities, that does not have air conditioning?
The library that we're doing now.
Other, everything else is fully equipped with air conditioning?
I don't directly deal with the library.
No, not the, any other government building?
Any other buildings?
That the city, that you may deal, everything is air conditioned, so no other OSHA violations may come our way from other employees?
No, but everything has air conditioning. We all, the violations of the complex, they've been going on for quite a long time. And it's time for us to replace those equipment.
As a President?
Councilwoman Velez?
Thank you. I just want to highlight a little bit of something here. When we bonded five million dollars, it's not only because of 111 Broadway, also was include the museum and include other projects that needed to come up to date because there was a court order. And why it's now here, of course, change administration. They inherited a lot of things that we need to be forward, had been discussing before in other committees. I recall that we was in committee in that time, but still, we retain a lot to remember what was talking and issue on that. Now, I know that we had a conversation on it. I know that the system is gonna change. It's not for AC only, ladies and gentlemen, it's for heat. It's gonna be covered, right, correct? And where it was before, and I believe where it was before is no longer is gonna be existing. That unit is gonna come out, and it's gonna go on top of the roof, I believe?
No, it's coming off the roof.
Off the roof, sorry, but it's gonna go in the...
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that this is covered and we're moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. Roll call on item number thirty-six for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For this, we've been talking about this unit, and the government has said to us we need to get this thing fixed, and it's been over a year. Do we take a chance and say not do it, and then let them fine us a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, whatever they feel like it? They'll send it down to us, and we have no choice but to pay it. This has been an ongoing situation at that Public Safety Complex before I even got elected. So this has been ongoing for a while. And do we take a chance and not do it? And get fined for not doing what we need to do? We have to get it done. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Recently, the chief has put together a tour of the facilities. These facilities are so out of date, and, you know, the discussion that I thought was, would be more advantageous is talking about putting up a new facility, spending 1.8 million dollars on an air conditioning unit, and then three, four years down the line, we go back and redo a facility. I just think you just need to be, anyway, my vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Khalid? Councilman McCoy? Councilman Velez?
Director, before my vote, I just want to commend Louis Guzman, Facility Director or Superintendent. I want to commend you and the DPW workers. I have, I don't know if I have open policy doors in the buildings. When I go there, I see the great job that they've been doing on the floors. It looks different. The morale of the employees looks different. They see more happiness. When they walk back and forth, they don't see wires hanging over. So I commend the hard work that you guys been doing in that building. And I've said, if we could, if we could put up today all our building, we would save money in a lot of ways. So I commend you for the great job you have been doing in that building, and entire 111 Broadway buildings. So the courts, the community improvement, and our surrounding. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor, one against, two absent. Item number thirty-six is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director. Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirty-seven?
Next item is item number thirty-seven, resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved state contract vendors for specialized firefighter equipment and services for the fire department. Fire Resolution eighteen-six-six-one.
So move.
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Velez. Director?
So what this is, this is a resolution that we can enter the contracts, state contract vendors. This is a budgeted item that was budgeted back in June to July. This allows us to legally spend the money with them. What this will do is AAA emergency supply does our air, breathing air for the firefighters. This is all mandated stuff by OSHA, P.O.S., repairs of our ambulances. Uh, repairs of our ambulances, repairs of the fire trucks. It's recurring spending. And it's, uh, each year, it's the same exact thing. Pretty much comes up. And we really haven't changed any numbers. Uh, the only one was VE Ralph, but we did that a few weeks ago for our, because of the Narcan. Uh, if you have any questions on it, that's, that's what this is.
Director, how long has it been since those bills have been paid?
Uh, right now, uh, we haven't really seen any movement on these bills since, uh, I guess, uh, about July.
July, okay. Very well. Council members, if you don't have any questions, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Roll call and item number thirty-seven for approval. Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Jackson?
Jackson.
Councilman Kalii?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you.
Take care, Chief.
Item seventy in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-seven is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Uh, at this time, we're going to open up the public portion. Uh, I am granting, uh, Vice President, um, Council Courtesy. He has asked, so young lady, if you can please come up? State your name for the record. Madam Clerk, how many, um, people are on the?
Ten speakers.
Ten speakers?
Yes, um, the public portion is not, her name is on here.
Okay, and right, I, I'm, I'm going to, I'm granting Councilman Jackson courtesy.
Right.
Um, ma'am, just, just pull the, just state your name and I'll just for the record.
Good evening. My name is Candace Spieeman. And I'm here on behalf of my son and my mother. We're residents of the Riverside Terrace. And as everyone know, it's going to be demolished soon. Our problem is, two years ago, I lived in, uh, the Pleasure Place, which is the high-rise. And they decided, because of, um, high drug trafficking and stuff, to relocate my family. My mother and I and my son, we went to a meeting with Ms. Gorman and Ms. Memes. And I brought medical documents from her doctor. He made it very clear, she's at risk as far as steps. And she has other health issues going on. Now, I'm my mother's sole caretaker. They told us, well, why don't you put her in a seniors building? And I said, no, because I take care of her. And I have my son, I don't have a car. I'm all over the place. I have to be, you know, keep us together. They said, well, either vacate the, uh, premises, or we'll take legal actions. I said, well, I found an apartment. Uh, the high-rise over on, um, Route twenty by Dunkin' Donuts. And the manager said he will work with us. He said, we'll even take the voucher if you can get one. And I can hold the apartment as long as I can. When we went to the meeting, I brought this up. They said, no, we're not giving any special funds. Everyone's going to get it all at once. So either vacate the, the unit, or they're going to take legal actions. So I brought my mother down to Grimes Place. She has not been able to come downstairs because of this health risk. The only time she comes downstairs is when she's in a wheelchair. And they're medically, uh, transferring her to the doctors. Right now, she's home alone and I'm concerned, because I try to be home, especially in the evening. Because there's been a rash of break-ins or, or in the development. So I'm there, I'm watching my son, I'm watching my mother. I'm all over the place looking for an apartment. We have secured, uh, I think approximately four different real estates. We were trying to relocate to Clifton. However, um, our needs, it's been hard to find a place that's either on the first floor or an apartment building that has three bedrooms. We've been caught back and forth, back and forth. One minute, they're telling us from Patterson, oh, we sent your paperwork. Clifton is saying we never received it. In the meantime, the time is, is, is winding down. We went to a meeting today. They made it very clear, look, just find a place that you can deal with at least for a year. And after that, you can leave. Yes, it's very, yes, it's that harsh, the way they're speaking to us. We don't have a problem with leaving. Yes, we agree the place should be demolished, but it's the way they're going about it. Again, my mother is home right now, home alone on the second floor. We're reaching out to any and everyone who can help us. All the apartments that they have recommended are in such crime-ridden areas. I'm not going to risk my son. Because like I said to Ms. Gorman today, putting out a white sheet and a candle and saying I'm sorry will not fix it if something happens to my child or my mother or even me. So what can be done? The residents, the, the, you should see the location, from bad to worse to even worse. And again, when I reached out to the original apartment building, all the apartments are gone. We needed something with, either with an elevator or a wheelchair ramp, something. I'm trying to protect my family like everyone in here wants to protect theirs. What do you suggest that we do? Because again, I cannot run the risk of moving from a bad location to a far worse location. I'm not used to gunshots on a d- a daily basis. My son is not at risk and I intend to keep it that way. I have a good son. I know where he is at all times. Everyone at school speaks very highly of him. And I'm not going to risk his safety because housing wants to push us out so they can make some kind of business transaction. I agree, the place does need to be redeveloped. The plan is beautiful. But in the meantime, what do we do as human beings?
Okay. Um, I'm going to thank you for coming. Uh, and obviously, you're putting this all on record. We do have the Director of Constituent Services here that I'd like for you to give your information to. That doesn't mean that I'm shunning your way, no.
Yes, yes.
Um, Mr. BA, um, I would like, uh, an email to Director Gorman, um, in regards to, to this matter. Um, and obviously, this is something where we're going to have to get more information. I don't like to speak on stuff I don't know. I need, I need all sides.
And we're not the only one. It's approximately fifteen people showed up there.
That's what my next thing was. I wanted to know how many other individuals are in your same situation?
Yes, we're afraid.
Okay? And, um, uh, Mr. BA, I also want to know, um, where those recommendations of those apartments that are available?
I should have brought it.
Um, that's okay. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm going to get this, I'd like it in email, okay? Um, and please include me in that email, okay? And once again, I'd like for you to give all your information to our Director of Constituent Services, who is by the Chief of Fire.
Okay.
Mr. Javier Fernandez? Uh, Councilman Jackson?
Through the chair, Mr. BA. I know that, you know, we try to allow these, um, entities to have, um, autonomous boards to handle their, uh, their business accordingly. But, you know, this is becoming, the, the repetitiveness of the foul treatment and mistreatment of, of our community members is, is, is just more and more alarming. Um, there was a gentleman that called me frequently because his child lives there. And she has to step over people with needles in their arms. There's, there's no lighting there. There's no security. Uh, I mean, these, these, these circumstances are absolutely, you know, deplorable and unacceptable. And these are our community members. And I would like to remind the council, as well as the administration, that the Housing Authority works under the purview of the council and, and, and the administration. If they're not doing the right thing, and I, and, and, and I, although I'm, I'm, I'm not in, I'm not against the development. I am against the financial layout in which was, which we paid or we're allowing it to happen for. I agree, it does need to be developed. But much like many of the other projects, we don't need to overpay it. That's, uh, that's my position. But I'm hoping that, Mr. BA, that you could find a, 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 a means to, um, put the appropriate pressure to make sure that these people are taken care of as quickly as possible. No one should be asked to live under those circumstances. And especially, you know, when we're trying to, um, uh, raise our children and, and take care of our parents. No one should, should ask to, to have to live under these circumstances. And, and I'll say it now, and I apologize in advance, Mr. BA. I think that any council member and any member of this, the administration that can go home and lay their head down at night and sleep clearly. I said it at the, at the Board for the Housing Commission, when that young lady who came here before, who was sleep, who was forced to sleep in her car for the past year and a half. Any person who is in a position of authority and is able to go home and sleep clearly without having the compassion for, for these people, should be resigning from their position. And I, I'll say that as many times as I need to, to make sure that our people are taken care of. And I apologize for you having to come down here.
All right, and, and your, your Councilman, Councilman McCoy, okay? Um, clearly is, is not aware of your situation per se, but definitely, and I shouldn't be speaking for you.
Excuse me, can I be honest? Because I do know your wife personally, Ms., um, Ms. Brenda, lovely lady. When all of this first started, I did reach out to her and we contacted someone in your office. And so your office did try to help us, but again, we had that roadblock because they said they were not giving any, um, extra, uh, special funds. So I don't want it to look like we're overstepping you as well. We're just reaching out for human compassion. And for everyone to understand, if you don't want that from your fam, for your family, what will make you think is acceptable for mine? For some people, they don't mind loud noise. They don't mind drug trafficking and this, that and the other. I've never lived that lifestyle and I don't want to know what it's like personally. Now, I want to know about it to help someone, but to go through it myself, no. It's inhumane in the way they treating us. It's like we're dogs. And they're just saying, just find shelter anywhere. Just kind of like get out of our way so we can do our thing. And that's not a way to treat people.
And we, we, we agree. And, um, you know, I'm glad you, you restated it the way you have. Um, the Director was here a couple of weeks ago. And all of those concerns were addressed with her in terms of, um, this deadline for the end of the year. Um, clearly appears to be, um, not enough time.
No, not at all.
Your circumstances, dealing with your particular issues of a three-bedroom on the first floor, um, is very challenging, challenging. And, and we'll need time to do that. Um, I know some folks that are very close to me, that are in the same situation and trying to find apartments. And unfortunately, much of the apartment stock that is being made available to them are in areas that are very...
High crime.
High crime and heavily challenging as, as well. Um, directly across the street from me is a three-bedroom duplex that, that is on the market. Um, at a...
Is on the market?
Yes.
Wow.
Um, uh, when I say on the market in terms of apartment that's available? For renters market. Um, the price is, is, um, well, it's at the market rate. And I've referred a number of persons there. But it still doesn't meet, it's first floor, but there's a, um, it's a series of front steps to navigate. I'm not too sure if that will be, um...
She's in a wheelchair.
Right, how difficult that will be for you. Um, it may have a rear entrance that could be a little bit lower than the steps that are in the front. So, you know, I'm at five twenty-eight fifteenth Avenue. It's right across the street between East Thirty-third and Wall Avenue. Um, I don't have a phone number, but you're certainly, um, welcome to take a look at, at that situation. Um, and we did point out to, um, the Director about the public safety issue, um, that given the low level of occupancy right now there, the lighting situation that is, that is very bad, um, that there needed to be some special attention being given and some special arrangement, um, for that facility. And she did promise that she would do that. Um, so my office will be reaching out tomorrow to make sure we follow up on those concerns. Um, you're free to, um, give me a call as well tomorrow. I, I, um, your biggest advocate is, um, is, uh, the person that drives me around, uh, Mrs. McCoy. So if you've been in touch with her, um, she can get, she can get the job done. But, but it's, um, we, um, we're sympathetic.
Thank you.
We are sympathetic. Um, the, the thing that you need to be most comfortable, it is in your home to be secure. And to know that you have a place. And this pressure of saying you have to move because we want to move on, um, knowing how difficult the market is, knowing how difficult the situation is, um, must be providing added pressure. So we will reach out to, um, to the Director of Housing. And I know that they have been attempting to provide support. Um, we just don't have the, um, the housing stock to move that along. And it should have been part of the early planning, given the population that we have and the challenges that we have. So let's do that. And, um, feel free to call me as well. The, the office number here is three two one twelve fifty. And they will connect with me, all right?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Council President, very, I'm sorry, very quick.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you. I would just like to say that, um, as a kid, I lived in Riverside. But the market, where does she, oh, there she is. Uh, the market out here is so, um, as you can say, saturated with, um, especially for those that, that needs something special, like the first floor or a building with an elevator. Um, and I know that you want to keep your family together. You don't want to put your mom in a senior building, then you go into another building. Because then, then you will have to do even extra more work, um, just going to the senior building to take care of your mom. So I think that probably all of us sitting here will probably be on the lookout for you if we come across something, um, somewhere that you'd be able to get, um, uh, an apartment. Because I know, and also, um, um, caveat, have her to try the Neighborhood Assistance Office. They usually have, um, a list of apartments too. Uh, Nancy Gray's office. So, um, I know all of us sitting up here will pop, will be on the lookout for you too, for something. You need the first floor elevator or a three-bedroom. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Um, we're going to end with Councilman Jackson.
So first of all, Council President, through the chair, um, Councilman McCoy, as well as, uh, uh, the young lady. I know she's talking to Javier. But Reverend Lagarde just texted me, Councilman, and, um, he says that he's, he resides in Kent Village. There's some vacancies there. They do have an elevator that possibly can, can, can accommodate this young lady. I'm hoping that they'll allow the voucher to be transferred over. And I think that's really the underlying pro- issue, that she found an apartment and housing refused to allow her the voucher to be moved to that location. Furthermore, let me, let me please, Councilman McCoy, if you would allow me the opportunity to extend my apology. Um, when calls come to my office, I never ask or think about where people reside. And, um, by no means, uh, I want the, I'm sorry, for one moment, excuse me. Very quickly, I want you to understand that, and, and she can attest to this, Councilman. I spoke with her mother. Her mother is a, uh, 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 obviously a little older than she is. We share this, we share secretaries. So why people ask for me at times, I don't know. I, I answer the call when people call. And it's by no means any shit.
I, I have no, no apologies, Councilman. I, I have, I have no qualms with that. You're a Councilman, you represent the entire city, although you, you're elected to represent the, you're elected in the first ward voters, but you, uh, you vote on every issue. I have no problem. If you can help somebody, you should help them. I don't feel any way about that.
You and the young lady understand that, Councilman McCoy, I lean on him all the time. He is an avid advocate for all of the constituents. And although I may have a position in, 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 uh, in the different direction of the Housing Authority, has no slight on the job that he does in advocating for the people that live in his ward. So I wanted to make sure I just put that on record, Councilman. And, um, you, you know how I do, I go hard, but I keep it, always keep it straight and clean. I appreciate that. And I know that you do as well. Um, so, I mean, I'm just hoping that we can do right by our people. So there is, please reach out to Kent Village. Um, Reverend Lagarde had passed along some information saying that there's a possibility that maybe some availability there. And also, Council President, if we can, um, utilize our relationships with the Patterson Public School Board, the young lady, her son also commutes from Fifth Avenue to, um, Science and Technology, which is at East Railroad Avenue. It's a substantial distance. And he's, he was denied, um, bus passes. So, um, if we can, if we can just...
It's a charter school, right?
Say, say no more. Um, you have all your, the information, right?
I do.
Yeah.
We will be in touch with you tomorrow, okay? Okay, uh, commissioners that are watching this, uh, you are all going to get a phone call from me. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much and-
How much is the local bus pass?
The problem is that it's a charter school.
How much is the bus pass for the month?
Ma'am, what's, what's the daily bu- bus pass?
Well, he takes the bus. However, when I contacted the bus company, they said they're not going to make any special arrangements if we move from the allotted, the designated bus pass. When I went to the Board of Education, they said no, because his name is already in the system for the bus. So, again, wherever I go, I've got to find a way to get him to school, because he has to be there by 7:40.
And, and, and I'm sure that once we establish where you're going to live, we'll definitely visit that. So, if right now he has, he has it, then good, okay? But, we got to first see what you're going to live, because I do know that there's a mile restriction. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Originally, they said we had to be out on the third. Then I heard the 17th, today, it looks like they're staying within three days, that's the way I felt.
Okay, no, 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 we'll, we'll, we'll continue this, this conversation. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. And to all of you and all of you watching, just thank you, I know we kind of like went out of order.
Are we okay?
Yeah, yeah. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, next speaker is Mr. Rodriguez.
Hi, hi, how you doing? My name is Adam Rodriguez, I live in Second Ward, Second Ward. I live in 257 Spring Street. And I have a problem, the street cleaner, they don't, they don't pass around. And the street, the DPW, the street cleaner, I don't know why. I'm, I'm tired, the people throwing garbage on my house. And I don't know why they throwing bottles, some people that work, work in San Jose South, they parking there and they throwing garbage. And I want to speak to Chalk King Khalid, and I don't know what, I just called him and he didn't say nothing.
Okay, did you inform Mr. Khalid?
I just called him and he said-
You just told him?
I just called him la- last week and he didn't, he didn't do nothing.
Okay, so, so, is that all, because I want to answer you?
Yes.
Okay, is that all, okay, so, we have our DPW Director here. That is the individual that we need to address when it comes to sweepers not passing through certain streets. I know that there are certain dates and alternative routes that are taken. I'm not here to defend any council member, because you can call any council member, okay? And put forth your information, even to our secretaries, you can call and put this complaint. But this is going to be directed to our Director of DPW, alright? So, I'm going to want you to give your address, okay? And when was the last time that you think you saw a sweeper?
Three months straight, October, November, December.
Okay, so, so Director, I'm going to ask you to address this situation, Mr. BA as well. The address is what?
257 Spring Street.
257 Spring Street, so, it's the entire block?
The whole block.
Okay, we're going to look into that, okay, Mr. Rodriguez?
They clean on Wednesdays and Thursdays, the other side, and they do nothing.
Okay, Director, you got that information? Okay, you can go right over to, to the Director, thank you so much for coming. Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Mr. Fascaldo.
Tom Fascaldo, one I am Patterson, Preakness Avenue, haven't been here in a long time. And this is my first chance to get back. And it's good to be able to get back. Now, I chose to talk tonight about corruption in our elections. Corruption is right in front of us and we are so accustomed to corruption, we don't even see it. Our Constitution specifies we vote for candidates. The Constitution does not specify top lines are to be created for any political party at all. Or even a provision for printing a political party name on the ballot. The last election, we, the average voter, voted for no candidates. We voted for or against one of two monopoly parties. Most of us do not know the names of the candidates or even if we voted for them. Additionally, voters are now accustomed to hear bribery called campaign donations. There is no difference between a campaign donation and a bribery except Mexico and the United States. We do not notice also sample ballots that are useful a month before election. For, for this election were in our hands exactly two days before the election. Now, that, that is shameful conduct for elections and it's something we overlook, all of it. Now, I was once elected President of the Beekeepers and President of the Patterson Taxpayers Association unanimously at the same time. And I'll tell you two reasons exactly why they voted for me. First of all, these are responsible jobs with no pay and lots of work. And secondly, when the elections came, I was on a tour of Europe. So, that's how you win elections. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fascaldo, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm next speaker, Mr. Elvis Doran.
I don't know, why don't you ask? Church man.
Yes.
Good evening.
Mr. Elvis Doran, just want to say Merry Christmas to the ones that's out there on TV land. I'm talking to 25,000 people in the city of Patterson, New Jersey. Before I get started, just want to say thank you to Councilwoman of the Fourth Ward, my Councilwoman of the Fourth Ward, I still live on the Fourth Ward for right now. Ruby Cotton, for supporting Elvis Doran Outreach Music Productions, new project, I Miss You Moms. I also want to give thanks to the mayor, I was surprised. The mayor, our new mayor of the city of Patterson, Andre Sayer, for supporting my new album. I also want to give thanks to my big brother, Councilman Michael Jackson, he texted me earlier, he will be supporting my new album. And I want to give thanks to the Red McCoy, McCoy, I know McCoy going to be supporting me soon, but his cousin, McCoy right here, he supported my new album. And forgot his name right there in the back, but he worked in the mayor office, he supported. But anyway, let me get-
Javier, Javier Fernandez.
That's his name. And I also want to say, this is the first year in the city of Patterson, the downtown Patterson, the downtown Patterson have a real Christmas tree. Christmas tree is nice, I want to say thank you to the city of Patterson and to the mayor. I know my time is almost up, but this is my new album. Patterson, New Jersey, this is my new album, you could find, you could find this album on iTunes and Apple Music. And tonight, I have hard copies right here and it's only five dollars. To the City Council, support, if you could, support me. I've been living in the city of Patterson all my life, I was born and born in hospital. And I've been doing gospel music for 22 years, right here in the city of Patterson, travel North Carolina, South Carolina. And this is my new music, this is my third project, didn't have nothing new since 2009, God is blessing me. I'm not going nowhere, I will still be staying in my city, I love my city, Patterson, okay?
What's the name of the album?
My new album is I Miss You Moms, you could go to iTunes and get the new album on iTunes and Apple Music. But tonight, I got it right here.
How much is it?
It's only five dollars, right here, the hard copies, hard copies mean CDs. Um, I got enough for everybody. Amen? Patterson, just want y'all to know I love y'all, I'm going to continue to do events right here in the city of Patterson. I'm looking forward to 2019. And before I sit down, I just want to, want to say this, I'm looking forward to that arena, Patterson, New Jersey. I'm looking forward to be the person to open up for the new arena, live in concert, right here on, on, what, Main Street? Or that's on Smith Street? Smith Street, they're building a professional arena that hold 12,000 people in a five-star hotel. So, I'm looking to be, be the one to cut the ribbon and to perform live at the new arena. God bless you and peace.
God bless you too, thank you so much, happy holidays. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Yes, next speaker is Mr. Fontana.
Good evening, everyone, distinguished members of the council, BA, and legal, Madam Clerk, I haven't been here in a while, so, I'm trying to come back to business. I want to share a story with you guys. A couple of months ago, the company I worked for, the new CEO says, we're not going to manufacture anything in the US anymore, so we don't need someone like you, a controls engineer. So, I decided, I go online into ND, post my resume, for two months, I didn't get nothing, no hits. So, I called my good friend Joe, who lives in Persipony, I says, I have an idea, I says, Joe, can I use your address? I want to test something. And he says, sure, no problem. So, I changed my address from Patterson to Persipony. Within two days, I got over 10 hits. Within one week, I got a job. A month later, a month later, I'm still getting hits from different companies. Merck, who is in Kenilworth, who last quarter made over $10 billion. Okay, I'm in a process of interviewing with them, but because I'm being punished, because I live in Patterson, I was, I wasn't qualified. I'm being punished because I pay high auto insurance, almost $10,000 a year for auto insurance in the city of Patterson. I'm being punished because I'm paying over $10,000 property tax. I'm being punished because I'm a Pattersonian. But yet, I brought this up years ago, I'm still in the same situation. That's telling me nobody's listening, nobody's doing anything. So, we are going to continue to be punished because we are Pattersonians? Nothing has changed. This is why it's not coming, because I didn't see change and I don't see change. And I said it before, we need dreamers, innovators. If you're going to run for office just because you want to show your face and say, oh, look at me, I'm this, you're doing it all wrong. If you don't have compassion for the people, you're doing it all wrong. If you don't have ideas and going to think outside the box, you're doing it all wrong. So, here we are, years later, is still being punished and there's no resolution in the future. And what I heard tonight, here, as the city falls apart, we want to question why you got to fix this? This has been going on for years. If you live in this city, you know what's going on. If you sit in that chair right there, you should know what's going on. And trust me, I'm a nobody here, but I know what's going on. I grew up in South Patterson, now I'm in the Fifth Ward, but I know what's going on. So, here I am again, being punished and continue to be punished. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Council President.
Feliz Navidad, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa.
Thank you, I'm going to correct you on one thing, okay? You are somebody, so, don't ever, ever utter that you're no one.
I know that, I'm just saying, an official in the city, that's what I mean.
You can say I'm not an elected, but nah, I'm nobody, alright? You have a happy holidays as well.
Madam President.
Thank you, next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President, next speaker is Commissioner Hakim. He left, Ms. Mohammed.
She got my favorite color, oh, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, I, I don't want to start off with something negative, but I'm going to start off with something positive. But then I'm going to go to the real deal, because I want to know, you know, for the longest, I've asked. Why is it that Memorial Drive, coming around by the Salvation Army, cannot be fixed? They paved it all the way up to a certain point, left a big mess in the middle, and then on this side, they paved it. What the heck is going on? And I know before the mayor said, DPW Director, go and talk to him, I did that. He said to me, Ms. Mohammed, I know I've contacted whoever, they're going to send me some information and I'll get back to you. If he called me, you did. So, I want to know if anybody can tell me why we can't fix that street? It makes absolutely no sense. And if you go by there right now, you get a smooth ride up to a point, then you jump through all these hoops and then you go to another smooth spot. No sense, I don't understand that. Somebody should be able to tell us what is going on with that, somebody. Because we keep saying we're having inspectors, somebody else is overlooking this, nothing. So, somebody need to tell me that before I leave this mic. The other thing I want to know, because maybe you all have the information and we don't. The situation that happened with Bilal Hakim's nephew. Now, I don't know if you all heard anything about when this young deaf man was beaten? And nothing has come out of that so-called Internal Affairs, because if anything went in, I've heard nothing come out. So, I want to know if maybe you all have heard something, because when the director was here, and I thought he was going to be here for a while, so I could ask him. Because even though the prosecutor decided it was okay, they still have departmental steps that they could take. If anybody have said anything to the police officer that have done those things to correct that. We just continue to move on to certain things and it's like, nothing happened. And I just want to know whether or not you all know. The other thing is cable vision, well, Verizon, because a constituent saw me today and she said, she was, she was able to get the council meeting when she first got Verizon. But for some reason, now they're told, they can no longer have it because Verizon and you guys can't get together on a course. I'm telling you, that's what she said, that they were told, when she called, they said it was because of the council. Okay, the, okay, the business administrator, they're pointing to you, so maybe you're the person that they have the conflict with. But this young lady needs to know why she can no longer get the council meeting. Because she said she was dedicated to making sure that she watched this council meeting every time that you all on. So, I want to know if that's anything happening with that. The last thing is, now, I know we talked about the Patterson Housing Authority, now, don't get me started. Because you all, and remember, Councilwoman, through the chair, the Councilwoman Cotton, you remember, I said to you all, I was told that if there was a subsidy to help those seniors that was at $50,000 or less, that our rent could be frozen? And then we were told that has to be a legislative act? Whether or not we've heard anything from any legislator about that?
Have not heard one word, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish and then-
Okay, because we need to know, because I heard you all talking about, you know, they're going to put up some senior buildings. But when you put up a building and still say to seniors who are now on a fixed income, that we still have to pay this astronomical money? It does not feel like a senior citizen building to me. Or anybody else that is being taxed to death, when you know that our money is not getting any higher. So, I want to know whether or not you're looking at that and please, when you have these developers come to you and talk about this, you need to be asking those questions.
Okay, thank you so much, so you have various questions that need answers, okay?
Council President.
Councilman?
May I?
Hold on, because her questions are what are addressed by the BA. And we have our Director here. Alright, these, these, these questions, we need to refer them. All right, these, these, these questions, we need to refer them. Okay? And you're right, that we need answers? All right? Um, I don't want to go into detail in regards to when there's any investigation, um, Internal Affairs. We here at the council have to be very careful to make comments, okay? Um, we have our Corporation Counsel here that I think can, can, can let us know that there's certain things that we are not able to discuss when there's an investigation going, okay? Um, so, um, I know you had the DPW issue with Memorial Drive. You had the, um, situation with Commissioner Bilal. And the other was the housing issue.
Cable, Verizon, yeah.
And so, you know what, I don't recall what you said about the cable. Cable was specifically...
She said Verizon was giving them...
It's files.
Right, it's files.
Files.
Okay.
So the meetings are, are, are on files, on, on channel...
32 or 35.
Well, she said it was 32 in the beginning, but now she said they can't get it at all. And she said it was because you guys were fighting about...
Oh, they always blame us. They always blame us.
We get blamed for everything.
But she can't see it.
But we'll address that, okay? So, um, um, please, um, Corporation Counsel, in regards to, um, just let us know where we are with that investigation with Internal Affairs concerning... You, are you aware of...
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of the incident that, um, that's being discussed. And obviously, if it is currently in Internal Affairs, then that information is still privileged, um, to that investigation. So you are correct, Council President, that's not anything you can comment on at this time. Um, but to the extent that investigation information becomes public, then obviously, we will advise the council appropriately.
Okay. Uh, Mr. BA, in regards to Memorial Drive, we have our director here. Um, Director, are you able to address that issue? Okay, so, um, um, Commissioner, he's going to speak to you.
No, that's what I was told before. To all of us, so we all know what...
All right, so, so, so Director.
Yes.
Well, I would want to answer her last question, and that was that, um, tax thing. Right? The freeze, because it had nothing to do with renters. It was for property tax owners.
Right.
It had nothing to do with renters.
Right, that Mems was talking about. But, but the, the, the director said to us, to get the change where you all could give us a rent freeze as seniors, it would have to be legislatively done because I guess the, the feds would have to subsidize, like they do with, with all the other programs, as far as the seniors with their rent being frozen, if you make less than $50,000.
Right, and you know what? Well, when I, when I finish tonight, I'll text Wimberly and something again.
You'll see.
Um, because with that tax, um, with that tax property freeze, what it is, is that the state of New Jersey will send you the difference between the tax years. Like, whatever you paid in 2017, and then whatever you paid in 2018. Now, you paid more in 2018, $300, then they'll send the $300 back, but not to you, they send it to the city.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I heard about that.
It doesn't have nothing to do with renters. So I'm going to, I'm going to remind them again about the rent freeze that you wanted, that you were talking about.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you very much, Councilwoman Cotton. And finally, um, Director, if you can just address this issue with, um, now, you want him, I, I, I guess you want to hear our microphone. You want everybody to hear, all right? Um, Director? And Councilmembers, please don't make any comments. Director?
Just for the record, I did call on Ms. Mohammed the day after that meeting. We talked the next day, and I told her I was going to get back to her with more specifics. Um, if I didn't, that's what I did. I apologized publicly for that. And the specifics is, there's, um, this issue with the chambers that's right there. There's, um, of ownership, who owns that? And, um, I had talked to Fred already. Fred's going to send me the documents tomorrow on all that, and I'll send Ms. Mohammed.
Wow. What'd they say? The chamber owns that piece of...
No, not the, not the chamber of, it's the chamber, there's a CSO chambers underneath there. That's flowing water underneath that, that part. And there's... That's who, we're trying to find out who that belongs to. And this is ongoing for years. This is, I just found that this is, is ongoing for years.
All right, and this is our Memorial Drive.
Memorial Drive, right in front of the, um, Salvation Army. There's a creek that runs behind there. There's a creek that runs behind there.
Okay, so Mr. BA, is, is there a way we can find out? I mean, we should be able to have city records.
I think what, uh, the director said is that Fred is going to provide the documents for us to take a look at so we can determine who owns it, who's responsible for maintaining it.
Yeah, he'll be sending it to us tomorrow and sending to...
Okay, so Mr. BA, can you please have, uh, please send it to all of us as well? All right, to our DPW chair and, and, and all of us, so that we're, we're also informed.
Council President.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Council President.
Councilman, I really want to...
With all your respect, Council President, when I, when I caught your attention with respect, to give you the chance to speak, you say, "No, because the administration had to answer all those questions." I put, I sit back. But then there's a conversation with, I don't, I don't get jealous, they have it, but they, you know, they continue talking about your issues, and I want to...
Did you see that Councilwoman, I didn't say Councilwoman Cotton, but she went ahead? Did you see that?
Yeah, but you, but, but you didn't stop her. Yeah.
Ms. Mohammed, if you can have a seat, where in, where in?
The, 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 if you allow me to clarify something about what, what, uh, the process I was going back there in Memorial, when, when I was sitting in the, uh, in the chair, uh, in the chair of the DPW is that the project started with removal of some oil tank in the Verizon site, inside that Verizon site. They find, when they was digging, that others come, um, tanks was there, and they broke inside, they contaminated the whole area where you see that construction going on. And, um, they in the face of finishing, the only thing there is that the administration had to get in contact with Fred when they're going to finish. But that was the big situation there. And they applied more funds because they had to dig inside to bring more soil and et cetera, et cetera. But to see what they is really is going to be completed, that's the right answer to, to...
But you're talking about by Wendy's, right?
Yeah, behind Wendy's.
No, 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 I'm talking about going all the way around by the Salvation Army.
They fix it. They pay, they pay it.
Ride there right now, and see, don't you do this.
It's not, um, Councilman, Councilman, no, it's not. It's, it's stopped. It, right. All right, thank you, thank you.
The last time I went there, it was, I don't know, I saw that.
Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you so much.
In Memorial Drive, I thought it was the back of here.
Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Yes, Madam President, next speaker, Mr. Freeman.
I don't travel a lot to the First Ward.
He left. Next speaker, madam clerk.
Next free, um, speaker, Mr. Stetson. Walter.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
759, 11th Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey. Ah, wow, I got so much to talk about, I ain't got enough time. You know I'm coming after you again. 11th Avenue, they fixed the blinking light. Okay? Now, we need a survey of having a red light put up there. Because the fact of it is, that red light, blinking light, don't slow down nobody flying up and down 11th Avenue. So I'm asking for a survey before they can put up a red light, or either a four-way stop at that corner of 11th Avenue and 40th Street. Because some little kid going to be going across the street, one day going to get hit by a car. Because it's a school there. They still never put school crossing signs besides the little yellow signs on the, on the sidewalk. They don't have no signs in front of that school, because I understand it's a school owned by RDI, CS, or whatever. But now, it's actually a public school. It's a charter school. Um, a lot of kids go, we get bused there from school five. Like, the buses come out that school every day. Shouldn't be making a left-hand turn to go back up the hill. But they do it every morning, they do it every afternoon. Should be a sign saying, "No left turns coming out that building." But they haven't done nothing about that. I mean, I'm falling on deaf ears. Because now that everybody else took credit of having a blinking light working. So I didn't do anything. But the bottom line is, it's got to be done, and somebody need to do a survey. And we need it done immediately. Another thing is, in City of Patterson, and you go to Hawthorne, everywhere else by schools, they have these little camera, camera, camera lights targeting speeders coming through their zones. That's what we need to do in City of Patterson. Because somebody has to slow these people down. Because like I said, my thing is, I care about the kids. I'm not worrying about me. I worry more about the kids crossing the street than anything. So that's my next, that's the next biggest problem that's got to be done. Because that, you know, just like I said, that one bad accident, everybody jumped on, and when the car came flying over the hill...
Give me the location again? The location.
11th Avenue and 40th.
And 40th.
39th, the lights on 39th. If I live on 40th, 11th Avenue. That street, just like 40th Street to 20th, to Route 20, haven't been paved. And every time I talked about that, "Oh, it's going to get done, it's going to get done." We got holes bigger than cars. And all they do is come by and patch it up. Now, soon as the snow comes, what's going to happen? The hole is going to be right back again. They haven't done it in seven years I've been living over there. And every time I talk about it, "Oh, it's going to get done this term, it's going to get done this term, it's going to get done this term." Still haven't got done.
Okay.
Council President.
Councilman McCoy?
Give me the, the name again? Give me your name again, please?
Walter Stetson.
Walter Stetson, Walter. Never have to apologize for bringing an issue. So I don't, I don't interpret it as someone coming at me. I interpret it as you're, you're, um, making your complaint as you see it, and you have all right to do that, all right? Um, I do know the street that you're referring to. In fact, I, um, I rode down there last week. And I agree with you, there are some large potholes. They're not as large as cars.
For the moment, they, they would be that way.
But, but, but it's, um, it's a moon, it's a lunar landing strip, you know, going through there. So I'm glad the director of DPW is here. Um, he's the guy that's in charge of roads and paving and all that. So if there's any blame to go around, he's a big guy, he can take it. That's why we, that's why we paying the big bucks. So I'm sure he's going to take a look at, um, East 39th between 11th and Route 20, and make sure we can get the patch truck over there.
That's 40th.
But, but 39th...
39th is where the blinking light at.
Yeah, that's the bad one that I drove down.
Right, that's the, uh, the, the bad street is 40th.
Yeah?
Yes.
Is that where the High Rise apartment, High Rise apartment is on?
Yes, that's where Kent, that's where Kent Village is at.
Um, I'm talking the High Rise, um...
The High Rise is the 30th.
39th.
39th, right.
Right, I rode down 39th.
39th, which is the baddest 40th.
All right, so we got two bad streets on that section. Avier is taking copious notes over there as well. So 39th and 40th between 11th Avenue and Route 20.
Route 20.
Get a little bit of paving, um, going on, all right? And the, you know, traffic signs are great, but if folks don't have the discipline to pay attention to the sign or, or just obey the traffic rules, it's very hard to enforce. So I think, um, I'm sure Director Spiezial and Troy, the chief was here earlier, um, to, to monitor that area in terms of speeding and make sure that we have some enforcement that will slow, uh, the traffic down. But I want to thank you for coming. Your concerns are our concerns. And don't ever feel that you have to be apologetic for, um, lodging those complaints, all right? You're right, and we should be getting, um, to provide some services. But the right guy is here tonight, he's hearing you. And I'm sure he's going to have that on his, um, on his Christmas list. And Santa Claus is coming to a town near, street near you soon, all right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. One other quick question, one other thing, you said Spiezial, I addressed that to him.
Right.
And he's like, "Address it to yous." Okay?
No, he's, he's, he's a public safety director now, both police and fire. So you don't get any bigger than that.
But I addressed it to him.
Okay. We got a, we got a, we got a full army of 300 and something, um, uniformed officers with a Glock 9 on their hip. Um, and a radar gun and a police car, they, they're going to handle that.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, next speaker, Mr. Mott. Um, John Mott, is he here?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I was here last week on your workshop. Uh, my councilman of the Second Ward happened to step out at the time, he wasn't here. Again, the parking by South, by St. Joe's area is horrendous. Uh, two factories, three factories actually, the third one was just completed recently. More apartments than there are for parking for them. There's now a huge unit going up on the corner of Camden, Port Street, and Villa Levine Street, which I tried counting the amount of apartments, I don't know how many, but it's an awful lot. And the building underneath is not going to hold the parking for them. There's supposed to be a public parking garage going up, I understood, that was supposed to hold 200 cars, that was going to make parking for people around here at nighttime easier. I don't understand why the parking garage ain't going up first before the apartments? Because now you're going to have people moving in, no parking again. There's no parking, I feel like I'm a prisoner at my own house. So does a lot of other people. I talked to my neighbors, told them I was down here last week, they said, "And where did it get you?" Well, I'm here on national television, telling you again. They want to know what they can do because they're the same. Once we come home from work, we park our cars, it's weird to stay. We don't go nowhere. Because if we go, somebody from the corner of those apartment complexes or from St. Joe's, that's no longer allowed to park in the High Rise they made, because the doctors don't want to walk two blocks to go to the hospital, so they made those people for the apartment complex, not park the cars, it works for the doctors. So now they're parking their cars on the streets and leaving them sit for three and four days while they're at the school, teaching. So I have a guy that comes to the front of my house, two guys, matter of fact, in front of my house, parked the car Wednesday, don't move it until Tuesday morning, when they know the street cleaner's supposed to come, sir, which hasn't come in five weeks. I'm sorry, two months and one week now. Today he's supposed to come, didn't see him. Saw him at 1:00, go Marshall Street up Valley Road with somebody tailing behind him. But, you know, me, you come down from Clifton, you come down from Woodland Park, you come down from Little Falls, uh, and everything else. First street you see is Marshall Street. Welcome to Patterson. Look at all the garbage. You know you're entering Patterson because the streets are filthy. Now, Main Drag, what's that say about the city? We did buy a few new trucks, not two, hmm, three or four years ago. But for some reason, they're always, always seem to be broken down. Okay, truck breaks down this week, is it broken down again the same time next week? And the following week, and the following week, and the following week, and the following week? The guy doesn't have to get out and sweep, snow blow, or do nothing. Drive the truck. And then sometimes, when he used to come, he went by so fast, he left the garbage behind. It was like he was in a race to go home or something, I don't know. But my street cleaning is between 8:00 and 12:00 in the afternoon. I, i- if he goes so fast, he's not going to do the job. And there is something else I want to talk about, but I don't want to talk about on air. I do have an idea or something, but if I'm saying on air, I'm going to be on the hit list in Patterson. That's the truth. So I'd rather say what I got to say in private, because it might make a little bit of sense and might solve some of the problems in a lot of neighborhoods with the parking, with the illegal apartments that are always around. But when you got to make 150 phone calls to try to get to the right person about someone trying to do something, that's, that's a crime. But I still believe the parking garage should go up before anywhere our apartments go up, like on Barkley Street and everything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. It's, it's, it's hard, I don't want you to think that, um, it goes to deaf ears, please. Um, our hands are a little tied, um, with, with certain situations in, in this city. Um, but one thing I am going to address, there's no rebuttal, sir, there is no rebuttal, um, is that our Director is here, and Director, I take this seriously. Just today, we've heard two people, but I get a lot of inboxes, and I'm sure that council members as well, about the same thing. So, you know what, Director? Something isn't right. Something isn't right. I've gotten it from the First Ward, uh, Temple, um, I've gotten it from various people to say that they wait, they literally wait to see if the, the, uh, uh, sweepers are gonna come by and they don't show up. So, I don't know if, if, I know you and I had a conversation about some of this, and sometimes, depending on certain streets, there's alternate, um, routes on that day. But if the constituents in the area don't know, or maybe, I mean, I don't know how the communication is being told to them. Um, so, um, because they're quick to give a ticket. Even when a person is saying, w- w- wait a minute, wait a minute, you know, there was an accident in my car, I can't move my car, and they're quick to give a ticket. So, we have to be quick in responding to the situation about our streets not being cleaned when it's supposed to.
But they seem to let it go for two months, then all of a sudden they'll show up when everybody's lax of days, you're not moving the car. Then they ticket everybody, and they clean house. Then you don't see them again for another two, three months.
Okay.
And the sign, I know what sign, what day the street comes, because the sign is right in front of my front door.
So, and, and I also want to, and I'm gonna leave you with this, because I told you there's no rebuttal. Councilman Kalik is your councilman, okay? And I, I, I'm gonna have him give you his card. I want you specifically contacting him. If he does not pick up the phone, you could text him, and you could call his secretary as well.
Well, I have a smartphone, the only problem is it's a dummy running it.
Huh?
I don't know how to text.
Okay. No calling is fine, leave a message, leave a message.
The, one, one, one thing about the parking garage is, uh, in eminent domain court. So, I think, i- is it settled yet, uh? To the parking garage they're going up in, uh, by, by the hospital, Levine, um?
Is that still in, that's still not, that's not approved yet?
Uh, just let, let me caution.
Yeah, let's not discuss something that is-
Caution the council, because I believe there's an illegal aspect on it, and we don't wanna fall into that.
We can't discuss on-
No, that's, that's, that's fine, but I'm just saying there's more parks, but no, no garage.
Listen, I, I want you, Councilman, can you please speak to your constituent right over? You're all of our constituents, but-
Council President.
Madam Clerk, how many more speakers do we have?
There are no more speaker in the public portion.
Okay, Councilman Jackson?
Very quickly, to the Chair, um, Mr. BA, I know that we approved the funding for the four new sweepers months ago, quite some time ago. Do we have an ETA on the expectation of, um, when we, when we will be, uh, receiving them? A- and I, I understand that, um-
They're not ordered.
They haven't been ordered?
There's a situation going on, which was discussed in, 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 in DPW committee, but, Director-
Sweepers and snow trucks are two different things.
Which ones, wait?
The snow trucks are not ordered.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, then I'm, I'm, I stand corrected.
The, um, the sweepers are waiting for documents to be signed by, um, Dominic Stampone, I gave them to him last week, which is waiting for the last signage I knows, and then they'll be delivered within six weeks.
Six weeks?
Yes.
From when it gets signed?
When they receive the paper.
So, we're looking at this for next year, and how long has it been?
Do, do we use, do we use snail mail here? Do we use-
I don't know what that is, Council.
It takes, we, we, we-
I don't know, you can't sign on your phone, so I'm not exactly sure, they may not have tablets or, you know, uh, what can I say?
You guys can talk all you want, but we approved this thing for street sweepers, and everyone has been getting complaints. This is a universal thing. We approved this a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, and now-
It's more.
More.
More, even more, and it's just getting to Legal's desk right now?
It's been in Legal's desk, it's been there.
Since when?
Is there any urgency with this, anyone pushing?
I talked to Dominic on, um, I believe it was Thursday about this situation.
Corporation Council?
Do you have, do you-
There was a situation where we signed the documents, uh, they were real particular with the colored ink we signed, and Council President had to sign everything over, they wanted blue ink, we signed it black, and then we had to send it to everything back.
So, I don't wanna- So, the truth is, Council President didn't sign it on time, and that's why-
No, no, Councilman, don't, 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 don't do that, okay? Council President, the, the mayor signed in the wrong place. That's just really the, the true story here.
I just broke up Council President, because she said I didn't wanna-
Okay, the mayor signed, I, I actually, the one that said that, he signed where the clerk was supposed to sign.
Council President.
But then it went back, but on a serious note, come on, let's be serious about this. Um, there is some issues with that, um, which I think that we will discuss, um-
Council President, the, the route that the gentleman was talking about today, it was done today. I was there, I was stuck behind the tractor trailer, and I watched my sweeper go by that street that he was talking about. Council President.
Did you say a tractor trailer?
It's not two, it's not Tuesdays and Wednesdays, it's Mondays and Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. So, I, I was sitting right there watching the sweeper go by. There was cars parked, there was cars parked there, there was car, there was cars parked there. So, I don't know exactly where your house is at, but there was cars parked there that the sweeper did have to go around, but he was there.
Okay, Director, okay. Sir, sir, I apologize, but you can't do this, please, okay? There's no rebuttal, and you can't speak if you're, you're, you're sitting in the audience.
Council President, may I?
Thank you very much, Director.
You're welcome.
Um, Director, before you leave, I just wanna ask you, I know that, Director, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't, yeah, I, I know I could do this, uh, off the microphone, but I just, something raised, uh, you said that it's just waiting a signature from the legal department, and Dominic Stampone's supposed to sign it, correct?
There was one document that was, uh, that was left to be done.
How long that document had been there in that office?
I just told you Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
Alright, that's what I wanna say, through the Chair to, uh, Corporate Counsel. You know, if this will be happening in other cities, that a, a representative of, or legal that works for our city is an elected official in another city, will probably give another priority. This is a priority for our city. He knows what we need in our city. And we approved this, this machine more than six months ago, okay? And, um, way before spring, I believe it was. So, the urgency that having a document in their desks for three days is urgent. When it comes up to finalize contract, to deliver, you know, take the job a little bit more seriously. And I'm not saying that he's not, but I'm talking in general, if I was an elected official in another city, I know the urgency in my city, and I work also in another city, that have to sign and move forward that city. Unless he has another job that prohibit him to be on top of, of this, his responsibility, eight hours in the city. So, uh, if it's possible that, if it's possible that this could be moving forward, because when we have constituents out there, when we have constituent out there that they want, and they see this meetings, and they say, we approve it, with the machine, we don't know what answer to give them.
Councilman, but, but I, I need to just, um, because I signed that document, and then I signed it again, and there was some issues with legal, okay? And, I'd like to discuss it outside of this forum, okay?
Well, yeah, alright, we're gonna discuss it in, 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 in another forum, but, you know, it's-
So, you put in your request, alright, we, we-
It's not acceptable. I gotta take the line of, uh, my Councilman, uh, Ca- uh, Ca- Kalik-
Thank you.
He's not acceptable, and he's irresponsible.
Thank you, um, Councilman, uh, there was a Corporation Counsel?
Yeah. I, I, I understand, Councilman Velez, um, I believe that all matters, uh, should be treated in the most urgent fashion, um, possible. But, I do have to take some exception with regard to, uh, Mr. Stampone. In my time here, I have seen him in this office nine to five daily. Um, and in my time, he has exhibited putting the city of Patterson in its needs as an extremely high priority. Um, unfortunately, I can't give you every detail about this specific contract, but I am CC'd on an email that does outline some legal issues, um, related to the contract, and not just, uh, mistaken signatures.
Right.
But, legal concerns, um, based on the contract that the vendor presented to us, and what we thought was in the best interest of this, of the city. And obviously, as a Director, while it would give me great pleasure to take credit for all of those things, I, I think in this situation, it's only right to give credit to the person who was in charge of that, and that was Mr. Stampone. Um, so, again, I, I, I completely concur with the need to try to move things as quickly as possible, especially something of this magnitude, based on the residents' complaints. But, the delay, which sometimes happens when the lawyers get to something, is that we notice things that we have to address, and the other side doesn't always agree with us, and we have to deal with it until we can meet in the middle to make sure that we protect the city's interests. So, this was not a situation of, of neglect or a malfeasance, but one of due diligence.
So, Co- so Corporate Counsel, so, uh, the recommendation I do now, that before we go into deep conversation with what we have, if you highlight us first, then probably we refrain about comments, because as you notice-
No, Councilman, you would never refrain.
As you notice-
You're always gonna make the comments.
No, no, I, 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 as you notice, if you say, oh, this, because this, oh, it's a legal problem in it, but we don't know what's going on, and you just split it right there, probably we say, okay, it's not Dominic Stampone's fault, there's a legal matter on it, and this and that. But, and then we, and then we, we, our question, we had to fish for answers. That's the problem. And then after we fish for answer, you come back with the facts.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much, Councilman Velez.
I didn't really have any issue with any other council members, and it was only until you indicated that you thought it was an issue with neglect or malfeasance, that it became necessary for me to outline it. But prior to that, it appeared by your other council colleagues that there was understanding, that there was a legal impediment.
Yeah, and, and, and Corporation Counsel, uh, and thank you, and, and it's not to ca- cut anyone off, but we, we are done with this portion of it. But, I will say that I didn't wanna get into those details, because that was brought to us in committee, and specifically to me as Council President. Um, I know Marge was there, uh, when this was brought to me, and how there was some legality. So, that's why I didn't wanna go into the whole detail right now, okay? But, um, can I have a motion to close public portion? Moved by Councilman McCoy, seconded by Councilman, uh, K-
No, Jackson.
That was me.
Oh, was it, oh, I'm sorry. Don't got my hearing aid on. Anyway, uh, moved by Councilman Jackson, seconded by Councilman Kalik and Councilman Abdelaziz. Roll call to close public portion.
Yes, yes, Madam President, roll call to close the public portion. Councilman Abdelaziz? Councilwoman Mincon?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Uh, Council President, I, I, I definitely, and I apologize, you know, I knew you were gonna get upset with me, but I must say, mostly because the Councilman called me out and said, uh, as, as Councilman Jackson, one, I would never do that. I would never question the professionalism of those who are in que- in place, especially our Corporation Counsel. By questioning the authority of one of the people who work under her purview, not only undermines the person that we, in question that you're talking about, but it also puts a blemish and, 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 and conveys a message that, that is unnecessary, that Corporation Counsel doesn't have, um, the wherewithal to see what's going on in her office. Furthermore, um, I wanna point out that there are many municipalities that don't have full-time mayors. Everything isn't, isn't, um, politically, uh, uh, driven. You know, I, I've watched Mr. Stampone put a great deal of effort and concern and care into the, into his work, and for us, for me to sit here and just allow that, those, those grossly negligent statements to be made, and not comment on his behalf, I think would be, uh, irresponsible on my part. So, I know, and by no means would I co-sign or, um, endorse those comments or the sentiment made about Mr. Stampone or anyone else that works under the purview of, uh, our Corporation Counsel. If I have issue with anyone, I will take it up directly with her, and I won't blaspheme those, those negative statements on, uh, on, on, on television. And, uh, I just wanted to dispel that before I move forward, um, with the vote, which took some time out for me in making sure that Churchman's album, which is available on iTunes.
Right, right.
I'm very proud of you, my brother. I was able to find it on iTunes, you know?
Yeah.
That's, that's it. With that, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Well, I, I got to one-up on you, I love it. So nice, I bought it twice. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez.
You know, First Amendment, I had the right to say what I want, how I feel, and how I see it. Um, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it things just because I just wanna sleep with administration, or do whatever that I want. But one thing I was gonna say is, that I did not offend at all this Corporate Counsel that you see here sitting. I respect her a lot. My comment was, why they didn't highlight us before we make any comment? Because the fact was not on the table. And everybody raised a question about legal aspect of it, and I'm looking at, okay, because people are viewing out there, what legal? Did they stall the problem, or did the machine, or whatever? So, I'm responsible, and I'm going to be responsible what I say I do, and what I going to do in the future. Uh, we have to run a city. Question arise daily, we need to do what we have to do. Listen, I got elected by the people of the Fifth Ward. I got the way, my way to see things, and interpreted it the way I want it. And if I'm wrong, I say I'm wrong. If I'm okay, I'm okay. But I'm not gonna be here three, four years criticizing the Corporate Counsel, criticizing the administration, and the next day, you got baptized and everybody's okay. Now, the facts are the facts, and nobody had to control what I say, because I say how it is with true and real leadership. So, my vote is yes.
Madam President?
Councilman? You can see things a certain way, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're facts, okay? Don't, don't come back at me.
No, I don't know. My wife say, you know, my wife say don't say nothing, I don't say nothing.
Councilman, you see, Councilman?
No, it's because you wanna correct me everything that I say. I have been tired to say it.
No, Councilman, what I want us-
I'm not a kid, Councilwoman, and everything that I say something, you just wait until you get here to, you know?
Councilman, Councilman? What I, what I wanna say to you, and don't be upset, okay? My statement is this, is that you can see things a certain way. My point is that it doesn't mean necessarily that it's facts, okay? So, with that said, I'm not gonna continue doing the back and forth with you. I just don't want us, you know, when you start speaking, it's okay, you're representing the Fifth Ward, and you're voting on e- every matter in the city of Patterson. But, sometimes your comments are misleading, and that's the only thing that I want you to be careful when you do that.
Tell me what I mislead. Tell me what has me le- mislead.
Councilman?
That I say one way, and somebody say the same thing a different way.
Councilman, when you start speaking on certain things, that what you perceive, and that they're facts, that is wrong, okay? That, that is wrong, and you should not do that.
Do what? Tell me what doing what?
Councilman? I'm gonna say this to you, don't take it personal, it is not.
It is not what? You just say your statement, I could still say what I just said.
See, but Councilman, you see, you continue the disrespect. You already spoke, I'm speaking to you. I'm speaking, I have the floor. Before I vote, I want everyone, uh, to be aware, I sent you all an email, okay? Um, there was some conversations, and again, I, 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 I always talk about the Facebook heroes.
Yes, we are.
Or, or the, uh, Facebook cowards that are behind, that don't really come up with their true name, uh, uh, on, on social media. Um, so, for all of those that felt that we were talking fluff when it, uh, came to creating the Personnel Committee, you all have in front of you the assignments. We now have a Personnel Committee. We are within our jurisdiction to do so. By any means, did we, uh, you know, the mayor made a statement, um, that we are not here to hire or fire? I'm not taking that away, he is correct. Our mayor is correct with that. This committee was not, Councilwoman? Okay. This committee was created specifically to have another layer, to have more transparency. There is some things that have taken place that really makes many eyebrows come up. Um, at least mine have, ha- it has opened my eyes to looking to other things. Um, there are other municipalities that have this. Um, the district has this as well. So, this by any means is taking away any authority away from the mayor with the hires and fires, absolutely not. We're just gonna be that second set of eyes. Uh, we're gonna continue with trans- the transparency. Um, and I don't think that, I, I see anything wrong with what we, the council, have the right under the Faulkner Act, okay? We are mayor strong, council strong. And we should be able to move forward and not have anyone out there say that we're talking fluff, and that this is not gonna happen. To all the constituents watching, you know, thank you for reaching out to me, to say you wanna be part of the committee. Unfortunately, this is council matters, just like we have the DPW Committee, and Public Safety, and Finance, and so forth. We have now created the Personnel Committee. And, uh, in that Personnel Committee, we have, the chairman will be Councilwoman, um, Flavi Rivera. The vice chair will be Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman, um, Cotton will be a member as well as myself. Thank you. My vote is yes to close the public portion and continue with our meeting.
Thank you. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. The public portion is hereby closed.
Okay, very well. So, councilmembers, we have four items of which I know one of them. Yes, we've done consent, all right? Uh, no, Councilman, I'm not going to take that one yet. You said thirty-two. That, we already voted on that. Okay, I want to do, uh, item number thirty-three. Um, and this is, this is the way we're going to do it. We're going to do item thirty-three. Item thirty-five. Twenty-five as the third one. And thirty-four as the fourth one. And I believe we still, we took off fifteen, right? And item number fifteen as the last one. So I was wrong, not four items, but five.
I think we're missing.
Okay? So Madam Clerk, I'd like to take the first item, item number thirty-three. Can you please read it into the record?
And then thirty-five, and then twenty-five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One, one moment.
We're missing one more.
One moment, Madam Clerk, I think I did something wrong. Hold on.
Thirty-four, and we're missing twenty-three.
I'm sorry, yes. I, I just wanted to see you sitting there. I actually, I, I thought we voted on this, I'm sorry. So I take that back. We're going to do twenty-three first. Twenty-three first. Read it into the record, please.
Next item is item number twenty-three, resolution ratifying a contract with TG Neil Grand Hardware and authorizing payment for the purchase, purchase of hardware supply for the Department of Public Works Administration Resolution eighteen six four seven.
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Abdelaziz, second by Councilwoman Kalik. Roll call on item twenty-three.
Roll call on item number twenty-three for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number twenty-three is hereby adopted.
Very well. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, Director.
Number thirty-three?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number thirty-three, resolution authorizing all procedural steps required for the acceptance, acceptance of federal procedure funds, Finance Resolution eighteen six five seven.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kalik, second by Councilwoman Abdelaziz. Let the record reflect that there was a council member who had a conflict of this. I'm still putting it on the record. Based on the fact that these funds are coming from the county and they're being withheld by the county, um, the council member wanted everyone to know that he would be recusing himself from this, um, as he is the county treasurer. Roll call on item thirty-three.
Roll call on item number thirty-three for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Madam President?
Sorry, yes.
Vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number thirty-three is hereby adopted.
Very well. Uh, item number thirty-five?
Next item is item number thirty-five, resolution approving execution and delivery of quitclaim deed and custom, and constant judgment for Block fifty-four oh one, Lot five and five point one point oh one, also known as Two Industrial Plaza, also known as one dash seventeen and nineteen dash twenty-five Swineburns three, Law Resolution eighteen six five nine.
Can I have a motion?
Discussion real quick.
Hold on, motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kalik, second by Councilwoman Jackson. Discussion?
Corporation Council? This is nothing about taxes or, this is just?
Tangentially related to taxes in that this was land that it appears that really for, uh, record keeper reasons, it was never given to the people who were paying taxes on the land, who were occupying the land. But when they attempted to sell it and they did a title search, they recognized that the property hadn't been appropriately deeded to them. And they filed a lawsuit and this is the settling of it. For some reason it languished and not, was not just resolved. And they filed a lawsuit and this is the settlement of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number thirty-five. Item number thirty-five for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz? Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number thirty-five is hereby adopted.
Okay, um.
Twenty-five.
Item number thirty-four, and then our last item is?
Thirty-four before twenty-five.
Item, item number thirty-four, Madam Clerk.
Thirty-four. Next item is item number thirty-four, resolution confirming the city's compliance with the twenty-twelve U.S. EEOC Guidelines Regarding Consideration of Arrests and Conviction Records in Employment Decisions, where such confirmation is now required by New Jersey's Local Budget Law, Law Resolution eighteen six five eight.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Abdelaziz, second by Councilwoman Kalik. Roll call on item number thirty-four.
Roll call on item number thirty-four for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes, and this, let the record reflect, is a resolution confirming the city's compliance with the twenty-twelve U.S. EEOC Guidelines Regarding Consideration of Arrests and Conviction Records in Employment Decisions.
And the, there's a page that is attached that all the council members have to sign as well.
Well, not, not this one, right? There's nothing.
Yes.
Oh, this is it?
I have the original.
Do we pull this one in, or do we have?
I do have the original.
Okay.
I do have.
Okay, very well.
Yes. The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number thirty-four is hereby adopted.
Very well. Um, item number fifteen, and the last one is item twenty-five. Twenty-five will be the last item.
So are we taking fifteen first?
We're going to do fifteen first because fifteen is just that we need to remove the one item that Councilwoman Cotton, and we can vote on the rest. Remember, remember, it was, uh, the Fourth Ward, um. They gave you the information, but you still wanted it off? You still want it off? Okay. So, um, Corporation Council, we are able to do that, remove the, the, the first, um.
And can you please advise who, which one are we removing, just to make sure?
The Fourth Ward, the four sixteen.
A Fourth Ward, Wilson Torres, yes. And we will, um, make the, the correction in writing and can have it signed, but you can, you do have authority to amend.
Okay, so we can remove that. Can we vote on item fifteen excluding?
Well, we can, it can be voted on just as far as item number fifteen excluding this specific.
Right, okay.
Individual.
Uh, can I have a, oh?
No, I'll read it.
Yeah, read it, and then I have a motion.
Item number fifteen, resolution addressing renewals of coin-operated amusement device licensing for the following licensees. Wilson Torres, One Pool Table, four sixty-eight dash four seventy Broadway, Fourth Ward. Wayne, Ekinabaga, Estenbaga, One Pool Table, Sixteen Market Street, First Ward. Hector Santana, One Pool Table, six fourteen Main Avenue, the Second Ward. And Mo's Low Cost Bar and Liquor LLC, One Pool Table, Fifteenth Park Avenue, First Ward. This is Finance Resolution eighteen six three nine. We are removing Wilson Torres, one, which has a One Pool Table located at four sixty-eight dash four seventy Broadway in the Fourth Ward. May I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, um, second by Councilwoman, um, Kalik. Roll call on item?
Roll call on item number fifteen, with, and excluding Wilson Torres, One Pool Table located at one, four sixty-eight dash four seventy Broadway in the Fourth Ward. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Item number fifteen is hereby adopted excluding Wilson Torres with One Pool Table located at four sixty-eight dash four seventy Broadway, Fourth Ward, and Legal Department would make the necessary corrections.
Thank you.
Therefore, item number fifteen is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. And our last item of the evening is item number twenty-five. Madam Clerk, please read it into the record.
Next item is item number twenty-five, resolution authorizing payment to Edmonds and Associates, Inc. for hardware and system software maintenance support services related to, related to MCSJ Software fifteen for the Division of Information Technology for Fiscal, twenty eighteen Administration Resolution eighteen six four nine. Motion?
Can I have a motion? Are you guys not happy with Edmonds?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five.
Do I have a second? Okay, uh, motion moved by Councilwoman Cotton, uh, second by Councilwoman McCoy.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Thank you, Council President. And as I brought up in the workshop, this payment is for services that were provided already to the city? And I, I know my council colleagues, so this service has already been provided to the city. Marge?
Maintenance is always ongoing. It's an annual contract.
So, okay, um, as my council colleagues have stated prior to me being on the council, um, some of the, with Edmund System, should be going to an online payment system. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I was, when I came on the council, we gave deadlines, and I know deadlines get pushed back. So we, our deadline was November, we're in December, and in November we said January first, if everything goes well. Are we on track for January first?
And let me just update the council and the public at large. Yes, so that we are scheduled to go live February fourth, that Monday. And, um, I have a training schedule already set up, starting January ninth. So we are on task for February fourth conversion to live on Edmonds. And the WIP, which is the online, uh, e-payment system, will be available as well.
Okay, so February fourth, we're crossing our fingers.
No, we're, we're going.
We're going.
Yes.
I will believe, I'm, I'm excited. I'm actually, this is like an early.
Merry Christmas.
I don't celebrate Christmas, but I'll take the Christmas gift that we're getting February four, fourth, that I'm very happy. Now, what's the plan if we don't go live? Because, I mean, we did have deadlines prior, and the council prior to me had deadlines. Do you have a?
So we, you know, the reason for the, um, for the delays in, in conversion were due to some of the issues that Edmonds could not provide documentation or data to us. Because I guess the best way to explain it is our KBS system is so antiquated that it doesn't, it can't communicate with the new system. So a lot of these conversions had to be done manually, by analysis and converting something to Excel, going back and forth. So they finally reached a point where there's a few hundred that are not reconciled, but we can go through that as we go, um, live. It's no problem. It's not going to delay us any further. So the training starts on the ninth. We would have started training sooner, but everyone takes vacation during the month of December. That's just the way it goes.
I, and this is lastly, and, and Council President, this is a request to administration. If we do not go live February fourth, if there's some issue that comes up, because chances are, a lot of things do come up, I'm asking the administration that if we do not have online payment going on through, through the, the website, we need to have PM hours for tax collection and sewer collection. So, so I, I don't know how you're going to do it, if it's going to be over to, Councilwoman Cotton. I'm upon this request for you guys to make that happen. If you get online payment, we don't need to do it, but it's ridiculous that people have to take off of work to pay their taxes.
We can certainly add an evening.
So we promised our tax, I'm going to go back and I'm going to put it up there February fourth. I think we should do a press conference.
So I'd like.
I think February fourth, we should do a press conference. I'll be the first to pay my, 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 my sewer bill for the rest of the year using the online payment. We'll have the press conference in the Sixth Ward. So could we do that?
Well, give it a few weeks to make sure that it's, you know, because, listen, there's going to be.
It's going to be glitches.
It's not going to be like a light switch where you turn it on and everything's perfect. There's going to be issues for a very long time, as there is with any conversion.
I commend, I commend you guys for listening to us, and I hope February fourth is the final deadline date that we go.
That's it. Done.
Thank you.
Mistakes or otherwise, done.
Council President? Yes, one last question. Madam Sharon, do you happen to know if Newark or Jersey City, the other two large cities in the state, use Edmonds?
They do not. They have another system. Like, the name of their software escapes me right now. I was planning, I'm sorry.
I think, we did some research. I think there's a firm that does a lot of big cities called CIT dash E dash N E T.
That's not their, that's not their, uh, revenue software, but that might be for something else.
For payments. Like, I know Clifton, West New York, West New York has that. So I.
So, councilmen and women, the, um, the Newark and Jersey City use the same software. I had planned to do an excursion to Newark, um, in the middle of November. But, and when I met with, we have weekly conference calls with Edmonds, and they confirm with me that we'd be able to go live in February. So I've deferred that appointment. I still want to have the appointment in the event that over the year following our conversion date, we find too many problems. I need to, that's the only other backup we would have.
With all of the trouble that we've been having, that would be the responsible thing to do. I mean, it's been brought to my attention that those municipalities saw very little to no issues with conversion. And, uh, the, from what I, what I'm getting is that there's Edmonds is, uh, is where the problem lies, so.
So Edmonds is off the shelf. It doesn't, it's not a.
Customized.
Customized, whereas Newark and Jersey City use a customized software. That is one of the problems, though, when you have a customized software, when that company is no longer available, then you're stuck. So, um, but anyway, be that as it may, we spent the money on Edmonds. We've invested this amount of time. We are moving forward with it.
A lot of money. Very good.
Very well, okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-five.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call on item number twenty-five for approval. Councilwoman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Um, thank you, Madam Clerk. I think that, um, um, once we can get the admin system going, I believe that each department, um, in the city should have one person designated to, I mean, we want all of them to learn, but especially one person to be able to, uh, put the information in and, and send it where it needs to be. And that was the major problem, that they weren't able to put it in there and, and, and keep track of what they needed to keep track of. Because most of them were not trained to, to be able to do, I mean, they weren't trained maybe properly, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the right word is, but, um, once they understand it, I think it's really easy. Once you just push the stuff.
Once you just push the stuff in and then you see where it's at, you do the spreadsheet, it's right there. So, I think that once we're able to do that with each employee, with each department head, yeah, my vote is yes.
Councilman Jackson?
You said ten minutes?
Yes.
Oh, wow. All right, we're almost done. We're the last item.
Councilman, Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Billet?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number twenty-five is hereby adopted.
Thank you, thank you very much.
No more item on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Council members, I'd like a motion to close the regular meeting.
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Abdelaziz, and Councilman Kalik. Roll call to close the regular meeting, our last regular meeting of the year. Council members, please do know that we do have a special meeting on Monday, December seventeenth. Madam Clerk, have we advertised that?
Yes, we did, six-thirty.
Six-thirty? Councilman Jackson, you'll have to be sitting in this seat. Unfortunately, on that day, I do have a commitment with work, so I'll be getting here probably around seven-fifteen. Okay?
Very good.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, roll call to close the regular meeting, December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Councilman Abdelaziz.
Before I vote, I just wanna invite my council colleagues to, one of our businesses is donating a car to a veteran, a Patterson veteran from the fourth ward. It's Dynasty Autobody, it's at eleven a.m. He asked me to invite the entire council. I hope you could join us. There'll be some refreshments for lunchtime, so if you could please make it, he would love to see you, and then, this for a good cause. Also, wanna, sixth ward residents, we are gonna be doing our Christmas Eve Santa Visas in sixth ward again. If you hear the fire trucks and the sirens and the music, please come out and greet us, or bring the kids out. It was a good time last year, and we look forward to enjoying it again this year. I wanna wish everyone a happy and safe holiday, and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanna share some good news with my constituents in the fourth ward. I have been notified by the Johnson Foundation that my ward has been, and I constantly talk about my crime prevention through environmental design, it's been three years, maybe two years and a half that I constantly met every month with my residents. We were just notified, our partnership with United Way, and we just was notified, my constituents, that we were granted the hundred thousand dollar grant, fifty thousand each year, and the city of Patterson is gonna have a greenhouse in the fourth ward, I think the only greenhouse in the city. And I wanna say I'm just happy about what's getting ready to happen for my ward. And I constantly talked about crime prevention. Like, every month, I met, no matter what. So, I just want you to know, more information will be coming out. Also, I also established a Black History Month page called Black History Month PNG. Well, I didn't do it, my publicist did it. I have someone, I have one of them now. And we're gonna be meeting soon, all right, you guys? For Black History Month, so if you have any events coming up, please go to that Black History Month PNG and post your events that you would like to have, because what we found is that we do not wanna overlap with each other with events. I do wanna say that I will be having my thirty-fifth annual Christmas dinner at the Masonic Temple. We will start feeding at twelve o'clock, we will have the toys, we will have clothing, we will have blessing bags, and also, we have the hearts, the hearts ladies, I call them, from Christ Temple Baptist Church. So, please, if you're free on Christmas Day, December twenty-fifth, please come out and have dinner with us at the Masonic Temple, starting at twelve o'clock. Also, I would like to wish my Corporation Council, Ms. Shabazz, my Mr. BA, Mr. McCoy, my Finance Director, Ms. Sharon, and especially my Madam Clerk, Sonia Gordon, and my Secretary that's working tonight, Ms. Joan Campbell Douglas. I wanna wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, if I, I'm gonna see you, but I would like to say that to you now. And of course, to my council colleagues, wishing all, but we'll see each other happy holidays, 'cause we'll get together. But to you out there and the constituents, I wanna wish you a happy, safe, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and all that good stuff. Be safe, look after one another, be safe with each other, just take care of each other. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cotton, eat up all the ten minutes.
Councilman Jackson?
Good night, Patterson. My vote is yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Well, just a reminder, this Sunday noon, we're gonna have a flag raising and a cultural event, forty-seventh Victory Day of Bangladesh. Also, I wanna wish a birthday, happy birthday to our council president on December twenty-eighth. Also, also, also Henry Sosa, December twenty-eighth, correct? And also, I would like to wish everyone happy holidays. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just wanna, since we're doing a little invite, to remind everybody that the greatest party of all will be at the Brownstone on the thirteenth, on Thursday, the Bill McCoy Foundation, our fifteenth annual toy drive, which is driving our toy giveaway. This year, we're giving out two Xboxes, couple of tablets, and about twenty or so bikes for young people, and it's all because of your generosity and your support. So, if you're not predisposed, come on up to the Brownstone and join us. The tickets were seventy-five, but if you come to the door, they're gonna be eighty-five, 'cause there's only standing room only as it's going right now. But you can always see Council President and pick up your ticket on the side, all right? My vote is yes. Good night, and happy holidays to everyone, prosperous and blessed New Year. The council will be working every day, but we convene, what's the next meeting? Don't worry about the time. My vote is yes. I'm using up, so I don't leave too much for Billet.
Special meeting is December seventeenth, this is the last regular.
Very good. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Billet?
I just wanna do a simple request, there's a lot of rumors out there, I just wanna know the status of the employment of, the employee from Community Development Director, if it's true or not that he's working with us. A lot of rumors, there's rumors, but it's spreading all over the city, and I don't have answers unless the administration is giving it. If you could do it by email, I would appreciate his status in the city of Patterson. Last but not least, I just wanna remind the city of Patterson residents that we have free parking, meter parking, starting this Friday, the fourteenth, all the way down to January the second. And last but not least, that means that we over, Councilwoman President, I don't have no personal issues with you, this is business, I will bring you flower next year. My vote is yes, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and love each other. God bless you. Thank you.
Madam President?
Can I speak? Ming? Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa. Thank you all, council members, to all of you. Mucho, 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 mucho amor, and to me, thank you, God, I hope to see for something December nineteenth. Thank you, God bless you all.